All right, enjoy.
Welcome to the vote, if you see Councilman Knight. Our lovely mayor, he was stuck in traffic some way the last day or two in Virginia, moving at about a mile a year, but we're not making it here tonight. But as president, under the rules of the council, I get to take over tonight and run the place. And we'll get the vote if there's a tie. So we're going to go ahead and get started, and we'll do a roll call, make sure we know who's here.
Councilor Westover?
Here.
Councilor Warren?
Here.
Councilor Baker?
President.
Councilor Snyder?
President.
Councilor Schump?
Here.
Mayor Luz is excused.
All of you who care to card, I pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our first order of business tonight, the pleasurable one, we are finally filling number six, council seat. So Cindy, if you'd like to come up, and the reporter is ready to do the square again.
Do you want to take a picture, or do you want to take a picture?
Let me get my good side. I'm getting pictures in the past.
I have one of you, Mr. Schum.
I was scared that I hit the frame.
You're an anchor assist.
Oh, no!
You're going to repeat after me. Hi, City Mayor. Do solemnly swear to uphold the charter and ordinances of the city of Phoenix and to carry out my duties to the best of my ability. By the consent of the city council and by the authority vested in me as city reporter, I now declare you to be a duly appointed council member of the city of Phoenix.
Roll call for a minute to the administration before we move on. Okay, Cindy, if you'd like to join us up here.
It's the hot seat.
I know, you already scared me.
Just keep breathing.
Okay, next item on the agenda is public comments. What I'd like to do is remind you, if you are talking about something that's not on the agenda tonight, feel free, if you are, to call your name, please, for the case that you're going to speak later, it'll be easy when that agenda item comes up. And members, usually it's three minutes. First person on the tab is Andy Greer.
That's the real hot seat. This is, uh, this is, um, on, it is, okay. This is going to be short and sweet. I just wanted to thank Ray Pospol and Decospol and the Parks and Rec Department for coming to B City, uh, Phoenix's, uh, Pollinator Garden, when we had difficulty in the hundred degree heat, keeping our plants alive down there. Uh, they came in a very timely way, and they worked with us to, to create a situation that we could water our plants, keep everything alive and flourishing for, for the bees. So, thank you.
Next we have Becky Hale.
I'm going to give you some things to look at. I didn't make quite enough, but, uh, I'm from Phoenix Counseling Center. I'm on the board, and we are proposing a Phoenix Fiesta, a great community event, and, uh, as you may probably know, Phoenix Counseling's been in the area for, since, uh, 2002, I believe. And we are hoping to, I'll get money on for you. So we are hoping to create a fundraiser opportunity for us, um, and to create, uh, an event that we hope to be annual for the, uh, the city. So, um, as you can see from the flyer, um, we've got entertainment arranged, we've got family activities planned, we've got many sponsors from the community who are donating both time and, uh, in-kind contributions. So we are in hopes that the council would be in favor of such an event. We've put the application in, haven't received word yet. Um, we're also hoping that the council might be considered a co-sponsor, and also, they might, that you might consider waiving the park fees, um, so that we are able to do more than just break even. We are hoping to, um, use this, we're going to be using the stage, and hoping to, uh, get the area behind the stage freed up for us to, uh, have volunteer parking, um, and for plugging in some of the, the vendors and the musicians. Um, we're also hoping to be able to put signs up, um, at the intersection where, uh, the 99 splits, um, so that we could notify people 10 days in advance that the, the event is And, yeah, I think that's kind of it in a nutshell. Are there questions?
Well, I think so. Usually how public comment works, um, is that usually we don't respond, but it might be, since the event is a little bit ways off, we might be able to agendaize a conversation, um, about some of the requests that you've made here, add a later.
Okay, great. I know it looks like far away, but, um, it's really kind of close. And we, we're new to this. And let me also say that the flyer you have is a rough draft, because we will be creating posters with co-sponsors on it. So there are a few typos, please forgive.
Did you say your application's already in?
The application is in.
Do you happen to know that you've seen it? Dave?
I have not.
Okay. Once these processed inside, then we can have that discussion appear and agendaize it at a later time to actually discuss the items.
But we can go ahead and continue our planning and cross our fingers that everything will work out pretty well.
Okay.
Right?
Good luck with it.
Thank you so much. I've been putting in.
Okay, next we have Paul Kay, but it looks like you're going to be talking about, oh, you're going to do every color.
Paul Kay, 4495 South Pacific Highway, Phoenix. Good evening, and I want to thank you for your service and commitment. I read a letter to the editor in the Mail Tribune on August 15th that was written by a former council member, and I was deeply disturbed by it. I want to contrast the tone of that, I'm not going to read from it, but I want to contrast the tone of that letter to the city councillor's code of conduct that you will be discussing and adopting later. I will seek to understand others' perspectives. I will honor others in public and protect others in their absence. I will focus on issues, not personalities. I will be honest and truthful in all deliberations and interactions. I will individually support the collective decision-making of the city council. If I disagree with the decision made by the council, I will voice my opinion without eroding the reputation of the city council. Once a decision is made, I will support that decision. I will present my views in a forthright, positive manner. I will not blame others for situations I have the opportunity to resolve. If I have a concern or issue with another council member or the city manager, I will go to that person first in a private and timely matter and share that concern. If unresolved, I will present the issue to the mayor in a private and timely manner to seek means of resolution. I support the city's form of government. Now, the letter to the editor was deceitful and was personally attacking, and that's not okay with me. And yes, a former city council member is a citizen now and does not have to abide by these, um, codes of conduct or rules of civil society. My responsibility as a citizen is to always acknowledge first to myself each and every one of you's positive attributes and your qualities, and to acknowledge to you, when I speak, your service. And I hope that deceitful, personally attacking, public, um, spewing will be repudiated. I invite you to have a private conversation with the, um, author of the editor, of, of the letter to the editor, or a public conversation if that doesn't go anywhere. Thank you very much for your consideration. Thank you. You're welcome.
Carolyn Marshall.
Hello, my name's Carolyn, Carolina Marshall, I live at 142 West Golds Road. I emailed you all with my request for the carnival slide, all of those. I, um, thought it was going to be on the agenda, but it's not, so I'm here in the, in the public comments. I looked through the agenda pretty thoroughly, and I did not see myself in there. I had talked to the mayor, he had asked me to call Dave, and Dave was pretty sure it wasn't going to get on there, because it was Friday, but anyway. So here's the invoice for the cost of the slides, snow cone machine, and obstacle course. This is our third annual carnival. It's a really worthwhile cause, I'm sure hoping that you guys can, um, consider doing that. There's a town hall meeting tonight in Phoenix, Al DeBor is trying, he says hi to his nephew. Uh, it was real small, and we all got to have a little chat, but, uh, seemed local, seems more important to me this evening, of course, because I'm watching something, but also because of the new city councillor. I wanted to be here for your swearing-in, it's, it's a pretty cool thing. Really appreciate all your service. Appreciate the people who answered my emails, understand those who didn't. Thursday, we're having, uh, turkey tetrazzini with egg noodles, uh, mixed salad, and, uh, chocolate mousse with pears for dessert, free dinner. Everybody's invited. Where is that at? That's at the First Phoenix Community Center slash First Presbyterian Church.
All right.
Uh, my, one of my pantry people and access people put up some numbers for us. We've, uh, we've, um, gathered over 4,272 pounds of food in the pantry. We've put in over a thousand hours.
Well.
We, uh, we've, in the last seven years, we've served over 20,000 meals.
Nice.
Um, there's good time to be had, um, it's a wonderful place. Thank you.
Can I have a look at the date on that again?
It's Saturday, the 26th of August.
Did you do the popper?
Pardon?
Oh, Cindy.
I'm with Carolina. Um, Cindy Bones here. Um, just basically.
Say your name and your address.
I'm Cindy Guttenpoper. I work in the food pantry. We probably serve over 200 people, families each month. I see, say, maybe 300 families. Um, we've been in, um, working in food pantry for 10 years. This carnival that we're having on Saturday is the back-to-school clothes giveaway, which kids come and families come for the kids that do not have clothes to have. Um, these kids, that's basically, um, kids, as we know, this is a way for kids to have confidence as they go back to school. Kids without clothes, it's hard for them when they go back to school without clothes. And so this is a way to begin to provide those clothes for these kids. It's a very important thing for this carnival. Um, we provide clothes in our, um, we have a closed closet upstairs. We provide food for the families, um, and this is just a way, as Caroline said, it's our third annual carnival, and it's just a way to bring the community together. Um, we provide the, um, slides, we provide free hot dogs, um, and it's just a great way that we can provide this for, for the community to come get together and just have a great fun time. So, um, we're hoping that, if guys, if you are able to do that, to help us out, so, um, Community Center does a lot. That's been happening for many years.
Thank you. It looks like everybody else will have on here, like, speaking during Pacific Agenda Item. Is there anybody that I dispute on that, if you want to speak now?
Can I hold a reading for them to come up? I feel like, at least for, for the, um, First Presbyterian, um, we should, if I don't have enough items for tonight's meeting, um, if possible, I don't think, you know, I think it's a little, uh...
You can make a motion to add an item to the end of the agenda.
Okay, can I do that right now? Great, what we call it. Um, well, I think, especially for the first, so I would like to move that we add, um, the funding request from the First Presbyterian Community Center to the, and to make the agenda.
Second. Roll call.
Councilor Westover?
Yes.
Councilor Warren?
Yes.
Councilor Baker?
Yes.
Councilor Snyder?
Not voting.
Councilor Schump?
Yes.
Councilor Cameron?
Yes.
Thank you. Is there any votes back?
Diana Nelson, Walnut Place, Phoenix. This is a letter that I had sent to the planner, it was a request that we have to live off Hill Sanger, if anyone had made a comment, um, about parcel that's being divided into three lots. I'm writing in order to comment on the way, way in partition as a close neighbor to that property. I watched a specific lane, Walnut Place and Huntley Lane, were allowed to develop off of one lane Hill Sanger Road. Also, at the end of Hill Sanger, connecting into Cold Road, there's being planned to build five-stick frame homes on a parcel. We now will add three lots in the weekend partition with no upgrade to Hill Sanger. As it is now, as we drive, it's necessary to pull over to one side, allowing a common vehicle to pass. All of this development has occurred with no apparent planning to widen Hill Sanger and possibly include sidewalks. No other street in Phoenix has a single-lane road with our volume of daily traffic. Now this will add to the problem. I know all these new homes have taxes to Phoenix and bring funds for the city by ends. However, it seems we've done with no regard for us who live here. There are rumors that those streets that feed into Hill Sanger will have to pay for the widening of Hill Sanger. When my husband and I built on Walnut Place, there was nothing in our land sales contract or house contract that stated this mandate agreement. All of the streets are paid for and maintained by the city street funds. I'm not against development. That has a, that has a good plan, a traffic code, because Hill Sanger is not one of them. I suggest the city determine a way through grant for budgeting to solve the congestion problem in Hill Sanger in the very near future. If I had known this insufficient road would not be addressed, but allowed to get even worse, maybe I wouldn't have built on that area. We all love living out there, it's a really great area, but Hill Sanger's been a problem for the 15 years I've lived here. It was a problem when I was on city council. So it's just something in the near future. Consider how you're going to afford to spend about a million and a half, is what I was told, to widen that, out expecting all the people who feed into Hill Sanger somehow to end up being contributing back to the pay for, when no other street has been that way on city. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who needs to speak in the general room? As I'm going to close the public comments section, move on to consent agenda. Is there any, your councillor wants to bring forward a consent agenda item for discussion? Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to have a consent agenda.
Roll call.
Councilor Schump?
Yes.
Councilor Snyder?
Not voting.
Councilor Cameron?
Yes.
Councilor Westover?
Yes.
Councilor Warren?
Yes.
Councilor Baker?
Yes.
It's out of it. Next item is unfinished business, we don't have any listed, I'm going to ignore that one. Because of the number of people we have here that have special interest in one particular item that we have under ordinances, reading and adoption, nine seats, I'm going to bring that one forward, who would you want to do?
Um, yeah, I just requested that we bring this forward on the agenda item, because there's a number of, uh, younger Phoenix youth here who'd like to discuss, um, plans within that park's agenda. So, I don't know, if anybody can call the cops on that first.
Yeah, we can go up to two public comments on that particular item.
I see. I would suggest, um, allow a staff report on that item and then take public comment.
Let's do that. Staff report.
Good evening, I'm Henze, Planning Director. Quite ready, but I think it doesn't matter too much. We did do a report at the first reading, and so I think this will be abbreviated primarily to respond to some of the questions that were from the first meeting. If all of you have looked at your agenda report, I think they were reasonably well addressed there, but I'll mention them for the record. There is a discrepancy in the number of acres the city, um, needs for parkland. Because we have a local need, there was also a regional need established through the regional problem-solving effort. That, um, much like the amount of land we got in the expansion, um, we were also gifted with the need for additional parkland above and beyond our local need. And so that is where the discrepancy lies, in the numbers. Uh, the regional problem-solving effort said that on a regional scale, um, Phoenix will bear a larger burden for providing parks than we might on our own, but we're also getting a lot more land as part of that expansion. As all of you, I'm sure, are aware, I was not here during that process, so I was not involved in the regional problem-solving effort. But, either way, I think we came out ahead. The plan does identify a need for more acres, but it doesn't necessarily identify any specific property for acquisition, so we don't know exactly where that land will be at this time. But we would anticipate that somewhere, maybe at some point in the future, we will be looking at, probably, if somebody's even in parkland, at PH5 and PH10. The other question, um, was regarding the minutes, um, and, um, excuse me, um, testimony at the Planning Commission meeting. Planning Commission did direct staff to forward a recommendation, um, that the plan go forward for adoption, um, with changes as recommended by the Public Works Director, and also, um, with consideration given to the intentionally provided at the hearing by Mr. Paul Kay. One of the items Mr. Kay, um, was interested in was moving the riparian restoration up, to occur sooner, and also, of course, looking for funding to do that work. This body must ultimately make any changes that happen to the plan as it's presented, and so staff has not made the changes that were requested by Public Works. As part of this, they were simply recommended to be incorporated into the plan. If the council wishes to make any other changes based, based on testimony from Mr. Kay, or anyone else for that matter, um, we can certainly do that. Would simply ask that if any changes are requested, that they be specifically called out in your motion for approval, so that we can make sure that we do exactly what it is that you wish with the adopted document. You could motion to approve with changes, and then just call it good. If, uh, the council prefers, you could request that we make specific changes and bring it back for the next meeting, so you would see the final product. I don't really have an issue with, or a preference for either, um, but either of those options is certainly valid. So, that's really it for me, I think, unless there are questions, um, either from you now or after testimony.
Any comments or anything to say? Okay, thank you, Paul. Can we go to public comments next? First person I have on my list coming down from the top is Paul Kay.
Good evening. Paul Kay, 4495 South Pacific Highway. Thank you for your attention to this matter. I know this is supposed to be one-way, I just want to see, did you receive the written testimony? So, shall I, let me say, the motion I proposed is not to be a usurper and not to be aggressive, but I was advised to actually propose a motion, a very specific motion that would incorporate the recommendations, so that it would be, um, helpful to... Let me ask Mr. Cantor if I should read that motion into the record, so that if that is the motion that wishes to be adopted, it's done, or is it sufficient that it's in writing?
I don't have a copy of the written motion, I don't know if any of the councillors have copies of it.
My apologies.
You have your three minutes, and if you want to use your time to read the motion, I will need you to.
As, as you know, I would like to see the Bear Creek Riparian Restoration advanced to the period between one and three or one and five years, rather than, um, seven to 13 to 20 years, which would put it out to, you know, 25 or 35 years from when it was originally identified in the comprehensive plan as a priority. And it would not cost the city of Phoenix any money, it would only change the timing. And I volunteered to seek funding for match funding to multiply those efforts. And I have professional experience. I've authored grants that have been awarded to the tune of about $200,000 for riparian restoration and water restoration projects in this matter. And, so my proposed motion is, first, parroting what's existed in the Agenda Item Verbatim. I move approval on second reading by title only of an ordinance of the city of Phoenix and the recreation elements of its comprehensive plan in court group. Then, comma, incorporating changes recommended by the Public Works Director per in sections 5-6, 6-4, 7-1, 7-5, as detailed in attachments to CP 17-01 report dated July 10, 2017, and subject to availability of funding of not less than 50% of the total cost and sources other than the city of Phoenix. Advancement of prioritization to P1, in these first priority items, ECG3, Bear Creek Freeway 3, ECG4, PH Blue Aaron 2, and PH4 in Volume 1. Advancement of the park's master plan, advancement of the riparian restoration and interpretive signage components of Bear Creek Restoration to Phase 1 in Volume 2. Advancement of the riparian restoration and interpretive signage components of Bear Creek Restoration to Phase 1 in Volume 3, and modification of tables A11 and A13 and A14 accordingly. That is the proposed motion that would advance, um, as a, as a priority, the riparian restoration... That is the proposed motion that would advance as a priority, the riparian restoration and interpretive signage components of Bear Creek Restoration, especially in Blue Heron Park. I've initiated preliminary assessment with restoration professionals and identified, we started identifying all the acreage along the Bear Creek Corridor within the city limits of Phoenix and could even extend this out a little bit to Anderson Creek, which would be a good idea, because there's an outpouring hotspot, a state-owned parcel that's a hotspot on the creek. And there, I've done some preliminary searching of funding and various funding for this type of activity, so it's not a straw effort, and I would appreciate your considerations forward, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions?
Thank you very much, Paul.
It looks like Shannon met down.
Greetings, City Council members. Honored to be here. I'm at 317 Phoenix Hills Drive, Phoenix, and I'm a mom of a couple of teenagers that have been living here and attend the ATI. And I also want to thank you for your time and for putting Phoenix Skate Park on your agenda in the first place. Awesome. There are a few reasons why I believe a skate park would be an extremely positive attribute to this community. I think that Phoenix is wonderfully geared for youngsters, but there's not a lot of teenager activity, and so then they may, you know, not have a focused place to make skate or meet and hang out as teenagers do. So I think that the skate park would allow both a social outlet and a physical outlet for certainly my two boys and all of their friends, a few of them are here. And there is no location for them to skate here in this community anywhere. There is in Ashland, there is in Talent, there is in Medford, in Gold Hill, Central Point, but there is no skating complex here. And I have a, two boys who, I have to carts to Ashland or any of these locations, or send them by bus, or they have the use of their bus pass, which is fine during the year, but in the summer, I have to fund it. And, let's see, just basically that, the transportation logistics and the money to spend to send them to do things that they could do here in this location here. And I think that the one more point would be that the businesses and the residential community would be happy to see a place where they can gather and not kind of hang out in their areas. That's about all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your tolerant consideration of the Phoenix Skate Park. Having a Phoenix Skate Park would benefit a large amount of Phoenix residents ranging from teenagers, pre-teens, to young adults. And I feel that a lot of youth teenagers, you know, that age range in Phoenix are very underserved, they don't have many activities, and would really appreciate and enjoy if a Phoenix Skate Park could be built. It would provide a place for skateboarders and learning skateboarders to safely practice Skateboarding teaches perseverance, setting and achieving goals, as well as being a great source of exercise. Phoenix residents would appreciate the installation of a Phoenix Skate Park. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. Paul Stevens-Lowry, isn't it? Oh, you're not here?
Oh.
Zach Sampson. Is there anyone else who needs to speak on this subject?
I'm McKenzie Planning Director. As soon as I got back off the stand, I realized I had left something out. It has come to our attention that there may be a portion of a paragraph in the Park's Master Plan that we're not entirely sure of that belongs there. It is on page seven dash thirteen, almost basically at the end, regarding City of Roseburg and wetland mitigation. The question is whether or not this should be in the plan. It is referencing something that another city did. This was done well before my time here, so I can't, I'm not familiar with the issues concerning this, but if in fact it is in there in error in any way, striking that language would not affect the plan. It would not materially or substantially affect the plan. And so if it is acceptable to the council, I would propose removing that portion of the paragraph. And I have a copy here. If the council wishes to include that in their motion, I would certainly be amenable to it. I discussed this with the city manager also, and taking it out would not materially affect the plan. So I think we're safe, should there be any questions. I can leave this, or I can hold on to it, whichever you prefer, however you want to deal with your motion. I presume you get... That's dealing with the wetlands mitigation, correct? All it does is it references something that was done in Roseburg as an example, and so taking it out of the plan would not hurt the plan in any way. The language regarding the potential of doing wetland mitigation in Phoenix could stand without that, right? So, I'm okay with taking it out if there's any questions about it.
Someone to make a motion to adopt the ordinance with amendments to remove that language, if we want to remove that.
I guess it's time to open up the discussion, or instead of...
I guess I have some questions for, first off, thank you everybody who came today and gave public comments on the Park's Master Plan. I think it's a really well put together document that outlines what some of the needs are for our community and outlines some goals that I think will serve Phoenix really well. So I'm talking about including increasing access and inclusion for people with disabilities, expanding recreational services, expanding park services on the east side of Phoenix where our residents are underserved. So if you haven't had the chance to read the document and pulled, it's accessible online, it's a really powerful document. There are some specific recommendations for fixes to existing parks, and today we've heard a few more things that folks would like to see included in Park's Master Plan. I also just want to add that just because something isn't in the Park's Master Plan, this is like a broad document that talks about overarching goals and things, and just because something isn't in it doesn't mean that we can't do it. So we have lots of latitude when it comes to increasing park services to all of our residents. That being said, I do have some questions for some of our staff regarding some of the public comments that have come up today, and I wonder, I'm wondering if this is a question either for Evan or for Ray about what would it mean, I don't think there's reference to a skate park in the existing Master Park's Plan. Oh, there is, there is, okay. I can just go back and read it. So what would it take to bump that up in terms of priority?
You want me to jump in?
Sure, that'd be great.
Evan McKenzie Planning Director. I have it down here in here. We can just move on. So, a skate park is listed as a high priority item.
So this is under goal three, develop and expand recreational programming options, and this is where it mentions the skate park?
It is mentioned as a P, so it says skate park and then parentheses P1, and that means priority one. So it is among the first things to, first or higher priority things to consider as we move forward. But the plan does not call out a specific location. So it could be in any of the existing parks that could accommodate it, whether in our older, more likely, or it could be in a brand-new park that we haven't identified yet. This would simply set the stage for saying, okay, this is in our plans, we'd like to look potentially for a location to do our MNC funding.
So, Evan, so it's already in our plan as a priority one, so in terms of the Park's Master Plan, is there more that we can do based on some of the testimony that we've heard to emphasize their support for such a project?
I'm not sure that it would be necessary unless the council really wanted to make a big note of this. With all respect to the testimony given, it's not that I don't want a skate park, but this, as you mentioned, is a planning-level document. If the council wants to make it a priority to try to identify allocations, secure funding to design and then build a park, then we will work on that. So you could, I suppose you could ask us to do that right now, prior to adoption of the Park's Master Plan, but having this as a document would certainly help us when we're seeking grant funding to say, hey, this is a priority one item, we just don't know where it's going to go.
Okay.
If I can add to that, as Evan said, it's just a planning document, so it's not formally mandating anything, but I think the way to bring a priority one project to fruition would be through the budget process in the spring.
So, and so for folks in the galleries, so we set our budget every year, like in the winter, moving into the spring, and that's already been set for this fiscal year, but we could, you know, take that into consideration coming up into the next year's budget process.
And I did find the page, it's page five dash five, under goal three, develop and expand recreational programming options. The third recommendation is building skate parks to increase the amount of recreational options available to young adults. See also goal seven, park system expansion, and that is listed as P1.
Great. So it's already priority there, young, so...
Okay, sorry.
So, but that would mean, you know, continue to have a meeting to your council to talk about, well, how do we bring this to execution? Because again, as Evan said, this is kind of like a broader level planning document, so that's just something we keep in mind.
Before you go on, I need to do a technical point here. Before I began with you, I should have closed the public hearing section on this, and now we can go back to doing that.
Evan, thank you, Evan.
Evan is there? Real quick, bring it up. What work can we do in the meantime? If we are going to discuss this during the budget process next year, what work can we do in the meantime this year to kind of get the ball rolling with it?
I think one of the things we would want to do is identify allocation if we wanted to work within one of our existing parks. We do have some parks that certainly have space available. I don't wish to speak to our Public Works Director on which spaces within those parks are available, but we probably do have some space in an existing park where one could go, whether or not that is the destination. I haven't looked at the issue at all.
Now, if we approve the plan, then we can use that document to look for, see what kind of outside grants and funding we can get, get a ballpark. Next year, when we talk budget, really what we're talking about, anyways.
Be very helpful to have a plan with this in there, yes.
Okay.
Anybody else?
I guess...
I'm sorry, turn it over.
Sure, go ahead, you got it twice. I guess more on to the riparian habitat, what's pretty messed up. From my understanding, there's a section here that promotes us to repair wetlands, segments along the greenway. Did you write anything on those lines?
I have looked at that language, but I suppose my feeling on that is that I was not here, as I've mentioned before, I was not here while this was created, I was not here when any citizen involvement was done. And so I don't really want to second-guess that work that was done. If the council thinks that that is a higher priority than recommended in the plan, it is certainly within your ability to move that up. I don't really have an opinion on the matter as to where it should be. I would certainly agree that it should be done, as I think would our Public Works Director, but when, if you think that is a higher priority perhaps than some other items, then we can move it up and we can make it a higher priority.
I just wanted to thank the people who came forward to have proof of this, and especially the admin. Well done.
Any other discussion?
I have to tell you another question about the riparian zoning. If we did bump that up in the way that Paul suggests, from one to three or one to five years as opposed to, was it seventeen years? Ray or Evan, any estimate about how, Paul seems to think that that wouldn't impact costs, or, and also mentioned that he's willing to help with fundraising. Does anybody have additional information about what that may do cost-wise? Are there any other concerns about opening that up? Thanks.
Ray DeSquad, Public Works Director. By your question correctly, is the question whether or not changing priorities is affecting us financially?
Yes, thank you.
Well, all of this affects us financially, so when you look at prioritization of different projects, whether it be the skate park or riparian area restoration or wetland area restoration, you're going to have to make a bold qualitative assessment, come budget time, determine what comes first. So, you know, while these priorities are set up in the master plan, it's primarily fund-driven, so part of the process of what can we do now is look for money. These projects all typically receive some sort of support outside of the city poppers, and that's part of the process. So I don't know that it directly affects us financially to have a different priority set up, as Dave said, is the planning document, is the guidance document, is set of goals and objectives that we're going to pursue.
Thank you, Ray.
Any other discussion?
I read the point of the riparian motion, there seemed to be a lot of moving parts in this. It seems like promotion might be a draft, could be moved into the final, we have a different game now.
Anyone want to take a word at this?
Should we make an outline? That's what I was trying to do.
This one's so complex, to make sure we capture everything, we should probably have a draft first, talk about that draft, make it final, and then do a second. That would be my suggestion.
I argue the sentence is a planning document, that we keep the priorities the way they are for now, and then when it comes to the budget season, we start having that with the priorities. And then I would say that in the meantime, we can start pursuing grant opportunities for skate park and for wetlands restoration.
I agree with you, Stu. I think though, what we can do with a motion today is that we can acknowledge the pieces that our community turned out in support of, so we can acknowledge that in some form of a motion, I'm not saying that I want to be the one to practice, but that we can acknowledge that we would like to have the city start prioritizing some of these projects, including riparian restoration and skate park projects, so that we don't forget about it.
We're going to have to start writing. I'm wondering if with this motion, if we move the riparian up in priority, we can assess its impact on budget later, but then I'd imagine that would help with fundraising and grants to get an idea of what it's realistically going to cost for the budget.
What is the...
What if we direct staff to rewrite the motion with our input, so it's all comprehensive and clear at our next meeting with higher priority, a high priority on the skate park and riparian restoration, but that's, I'm afraid we're going to get a little sloppy here at this, you know, if we have it rewritten for the next meeting. Dave? Well, what I was going to say is you can't make the skate park a higher priority than it already is.
Sure.
In the client one, but what I suggest is you could actually just move to adopt the plan, you could move the ordinance per the motion that's in the packet, and then make a separate motion directing staff to begin exploring grants and developing cost estimates for projects that you would like to see potentially included in the next budget. I think you're really not in a position now in August of 2017 to say, oh, we've already decided this is our priority budget May of '28, but I think that you could certainly direct staff to start developing some cost estimates and explore grant opportunities.
Yeah.
Yeah. So you make a motion, write a motion.
I'm making a motion. Write a motion.
Again, I think the thing to do would be to have someone move or to make the motion that is in your agenda packet, and then a separate motion that is directions to staff.
How does everyone feel about removing the wetlands mitigation bank era?
I think we should, yeah. So would it be something like, I move approval and second reading by title only of an ordinance of the City of Phoenix amended to recreational element that is comprehensive plan with also removing recommended privilege regarding the City of Roseburg, you know, potential profitability, the remaining space of the riparian project.
You get how that?
That motion works.
That works?
Yes. Show, Mr. Schenk.
Tom, mic drop.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Council Baker?
Yes.
Council Schunk?
Yes.
Council Snyder?
I'm going.
Council Cameron?
Yes.
Council Westover?
Yes.
Council Warren?
Yes.
Okay, let me try for a bang of a thousand here. I'd like to make a motion that we direct staff to gather information and assess potential costs and grant opportunities for a skate park and for the riparian work that might be needed. Second. How was that, Dave?
That's fine. Again, a motion needs to be ordered in such a way that when someone reads the minutes, we all understand what you meant. And I think we all understand what you mean.
Counselor Warren?
Yes.
Counselor Baker?
Yes.
Counselor Schunk?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Counselor Westover?
Yes.
Having done that, but I think we can move back to the original schedule, even though someone else doesn't fit. If we put us in new business, that's eight A approval employment agreement with Eric Swanson.
Thank you.
Hey, guys, you're coming in. Believe what happens when you get involved.
Well, Mr. President, members of the council, I probably don't need to tell you a whole lot about what this item is. In regards to, we went through a pretty good recruitment process to try and find your next city manager, and we settled on Eric Swanson as the person that the council would like to hire. I did talk to Eric last week, and we discussed having September 18th be his start date. So there are a couple of things. One, there's actually an older version of the employment agreement that is in your packet. That's entirely my fault, I apologize for that. And we'll see the pronoun her in several places. That was corrected as soon as I realized that I had put the wrong verb in the packet, so all the hers are changed to his. And the commencement date will need to be changed to September 18th. But aside from that, I think we've all seen the terms and conditions that are in the contract, they've been discussed with you previously, and at this point, all we need is motion to approve and we'll get the signatures, and I believe it's Eric's intent to pack up his house and get moved down here.
Any discussion? We have the motion.
I'm the local employment agreement with Eric Swanson with the change that Dave just referred to.
Second. Roll call.
Council Westover?
Yes.
Council Warren?
Yes.
Council Baker?
Yes.
Council Schunk?
Yes.
Council Cameron?
Yes.
Next item will be new business, letter B, resolution nine-nine-eight, requesting a special city allotment for the Oregon Transportation Commission.
Very deep, Esq. Public Works Director. What we're asking for tonight is a resolution that is part of the application package required to make requests for the SCA grant funds, and we're looking to apply this to the North Church Street project. It's one of those projects that includes virtually all the elements that typically associated with an SCA funding opportunity, and the requirement is that we provide not only the application and documentation for the project itself, but also a resolution for new folks, so that they realize it's a project, and then we have the program for funding.
I have a question about the issue. If I read, if I look at the map right, does it only go to Sixth Street?
To where the improvement boundary on Sixth Street is, where it wraps around from the post office.
I was going to say, because it looks like it stops about 100 yards short, is it going to go all the way?
Grab it, sir.
Okay, I was just curious, it's like.
We're going to leave the cap.
I was going to make a question.
I could just ask an educational question. In here it says that the population of the city, 5,000 or less, is going to be a day when there are more than 5,000, so we're going to be out of this category. What would we do to do something like this in a larger category, I guess?
Not compete with larger communities for funding opportunities.
That's quite difficult.
Pros and cons, I think there is an awful lot of qualification-based assessment for grant applications and severity of driving conditions, a variety of elements going there, assessment process, but not unlike the grant funding opportunity without Fourth Street. You know, that was not kind of on city size, we'll be competing against all the other larger towns, larger communities in the valley for that funding opportunity, so they're out there, but not at this level.
Okay, I understand. Any discussion? Motion in the room, Dave.
I move approval of resolution requesting a special city allotment for the Oregon Transportation Commission.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Council Westover?
Yes.
Council Warren?
I'm going to abstain due to the location of my house along, close to you.
Council Baker?
Yes.
Council Schunk?
Yes.
Council Cameron?
Yes.
You know what? I have to pause here. I also live on that street, so I have to stay.
So do I, and then we won't have forum.
Okay.
So.
I'll second the original.
And you can abstain, and as long as a majority of those who do not abstain approve, the abstentions are, they're recorded as abstentions, but they're counted with the majority.
Okay. So, but is that, does that, your opinion represent a conflict of interest?
No.
Okay.
Okay. I just don't want to get caught up.
Yeah, I know.
If you're worried, you can do exactly what you did, which is to simply declare, hey, I live on that street, but there's no direct financial benefit to you or any of your family members by virtue of the fact that we're applying for a grant to repay, because we're going to repay the street anyway.
No matter what. Okay, I'll stay away from work.
Are we done with the board? Pass. Thank you. Okay, moving on to eight C, Discussion of Financial Assistance to FURA of Community-Centered Building. Anyone just talk to this one?
I'll be happy to speak to this, and I may want to call on Almuel, who's the chairman of FURA Board, to be there at some point. This is actually a road's council direction that was given to me at the last meeting to identify the means by which the city could contribute funds to the community-centered project in order to make up the shortfall in funding between the actual projected cost of the project and the funds that are available to FURA, either from money that they have on hand and from a loan from Umpqua Bank that they are hoping to obtain. So we still don't know exactly what that number is. Worst-case scenario, we're probably looking at $700,000 that FURA would be looking for from the city. And one of the things that we discussed the last meeting is that rather than do this as a loan, which becomes very complicated and also runs into statutory requirements for repayment, that you could structure this as what the city attorney described as a mutual exchange of donations, a contract for a mutual exchange of donations. So the city would be donating money to FURA, and at some points in the future, FURA would be donating money to the city. The money that FURA would donate would presumably come from net proceeds from the sale of the properties that they have for sale in the downtown area, and from growth in tax increment that they receive as part of their normal funding. The council asked for a cash flow analysis to see, will FURA actually be able to do this? And unfortunately, I don't have that for you tonight. The reason is that, as you may be aware, between the last meeting and this meeting, FURA's executive director resigned, and as far as I know, she was, she had started on that analysis but had not completed it, and I contacted FURA's finance director to see if he had been working on it, and the answer I got from him was no, that he was available to answer questions about it, but that he had not been working on it, and frankly, I haven't worked on it myself. Now, having said that, the city, the city, as you are aware, is in exceptionally strong financial condition. You could borrow $700,000, and you, I hate to say, anything can be done easily in the public sector, but it's my belief, and I think Jeanette, who's your finance director, shares the belief, that your budget could absorb the loan payments going forward without too much difficulty. I have been in touch with a couple of banks already to see if they would be willing to loan us the money and what kind of terms they would be looking for. The city, because we're in such good financial condition, we're in exceptionally strong loan risk. We would back any loan with the full faith and credit of the city, and if you look at our contingencies and fund balances, we would be a very, very low-risk borrower. So what I laid out for you in the packet was basically three tactics, I'd like to add a fourth, but the three tactics are, one, we simply borrow some money and we donate it to FURA. The second is, we take money out of budgeted contingencies. We do have a very large contingency in the general fund. I really didn't envision a particular use for that general fund contingency, except that you had, pardon me using the word, a ridiculously large fund balance in the general fund, and I moved, in the budget process, I moved as much as we're legally allowed to move into general fund contingency, precisely so that the money would be available to you if a use for it arose during the course of the fiscal year. So we have a $280,000 contingency in the general fund, and there's always some risk in dipping into your contingency this early in the budget cycle, but you could probably safely take $200,000 out of that contingency and use that as simply a cash donation. We also have a $100,000 contingency in the water fund. Probably don't need a contingency that large in the water fund. The water fund money is dedicated, but it's not legally restricted, so you could, if you wanted to, probably come up with about $250,000 in cash with just a simple motion of, you know, expedite. So you could do a combination of cash and a loan or just a loan, and there could potentially be a new revenue source to come up with some of that money to basically repay, the city repays itself in the form of the utility billing surcharge. An average surcharge of $1 per month on each utility bill would raise about $25,000 a year, $2 raises $50,000 a year. The debt service, or just the interest payment on a $700,000 loan, looking at the terms that the banks are talking to me about right now, would be about $20,000 a year. If we were to do a loan, what I would envision the city doing would be to structure it in such a way that you make interest-only payments initially, and then as soon as you can pay off the loan with no repayment penalty, just budget these large fund balances and pay off the loan, and then figure out how FURA is going to make a donation to the city to compensate the city for the cash that you're out. So you have loan, you have money in contingency, you have potential for raising revenue, and I don't know, raising revenues is the most popular thing to be talking about in the public sector today. There was also a request, an informal request that was made to me by the previous FURA executive director, the city to continue considering waiving the system development charges on the project. The SDCs are estimated at $85,000. In my opinion, waiving SDCs is right up there in the hierarchy of horrible ideas. However, you could defer the SDCs, so that FURA would not have to pay the SDCs now, but perhaps could start making payments on the SDCs at some point in the future when they're in better possession and the cash flow supports it. So at some point, those SDCs have to be paid. The reason I would recommend against a waiver is that SDCs are used to pay for infrastructure to support a particular development, and the infrastructure is going to get built, and if the development doesn't pay for it, somebody else pays for it, and that somebody else is the taxpayers and ratepayers of the city opinion. So I think that there's just a fundamental principle that development needs to pay in some way, and that's the reason that I would recommend waiving the system development charges. So the bottom line is you can come up with money to donate to this project. I don't think the impact on your budget is going to be terribly significant. It is significant if you end five years down the road and FURA still hasn't sold the properties and is not able to make its donation as part of contractual expansion of future donations, but you definitely can do it. Now, the question, the question is still out there, how much does FURA actually need? And is FURA going to get the loan from Umpqua Bank? So there's a timing problem here as well. My understanding is that Umpqua Bank might not make a decision on whether or not to give FURA that loan for another month, and that leaves us very little time to pull everything together, because Detroit, your submitted low bid, is only going to hold their bid until September 25th. That means that we would have to be in a position, if we're going to do a loan, to pull the trigger on the loan and to abort the bid within a matter of days, perhaps within a matter of 24 hours, and that could be FURA. And that could be FURA's trick. So, Al, I don't want to push you on the spot, but is there anything that I've missed here that you would like to fill in?
No, I think you've stated everything very clearly. There is a conference call tomorrow between Umpqua Bank, our bond counsel in Portland that's asking all of these questions, and our finance director, Steve Weber. So, they are working it. But as you know, I keep saying this, they're working it and they're working it. I still don't have an answer. Now, Umpqua Bank says the loan is approved. However, because it's a tax-exempt loan, there are these other issues that have come up and have not been settled yet. And we're still waiting. So, that's the problem there. And the other issue that comes up is if we delay with Android, what is the cost of doing that? If we don't make it and respond by the 25th of September? I don't know what that is, what that delta is. Obviously, it's more than what they've offered us so far.
What do you mean?
Well, in terms of, we know what they bid, okay?
Right.
And they gave us 60 days. And if we go over 60 days, then we come back to Android and say, we're not ready. And they say, okay. And then, two weeks later, we go to them and say, is that bid still good?
You think they'll raise the bid?
I don't know. I don't think we have an answer on it.
Is it possible they're asking for an extension? Is that going to just...
We could try.
For 30-day extensions?
We could try for a 30-day loan. Just don't have answers yet.
Sure.
So, maybe we can't. I'll go ahead and talk to them about a 30-day extension and see what they say. It's getting close. Really, I know it's over a month away, but these processes take so long that it's getting close.
Can you speak to a little bit about what the discussion is with Umpqua Bank, where are some of the hang-ups or what's going on? Do you have any opinion on their ability to overcome them?
No, Umpqua's fine. They have no further questions. But this bond counsel has got questions about our past performance. It's all there. It's just getting all of the information and finding the person. And Steve Weber is the only one that can really do it clearly to explain what happened financially with the OBD mill. Indebtedness and, you know, all sorts of issues that are well beyond the board. We can't answer those questions. But we do have an expert at hand.
So, Al, my question for you is, so part of this is a timing issue, right?
Right.
And wanting to get something to Android before the bid goes up. So, under one of our scenarios, we have an option, or one of the tactics we can use is to use, pull some of the funding that we have in contingencies and get some funding right away and then potentially take the rest out in the loan, if I'm saying that correctly. So, I wonder, how much, how much, does Android need the entire amount to begin? What will we give them?
And that was the point of the cash flow analysis, because we know there's going to be monthly drawdowns from FURA that have to be paid to Android.
Okay.
And we're not sure exactly what they are, but we were trying to look and see what our cash balance was, month by month, to address potential drawdown. But you're right, you know, we don't need all the funds on day one. But again, the question was, and Jim Snyder raised it, do you want to enter into something when you're not sure of your ability to pay?
Awesome. Thanks, Al.
Why would the bid go up if it expired, we resubmitted for bids from different people, they're still competing for the same job, same plan? Why isn't it given that prices could go up? It already came in higher than we thought of it.
Right.
So, why would it go beyond that?
Because we're moving down the timeline, and they may say the costs are higher. I don't think they'd say lower, but potentially, they might say higher. That's our concern, but I...
I understand the concern. I was just curious.
Yeah. No, but we can go in and see if we can get an extension. I think that's probably the answer at this point. We'll explore that.
Yeah. My other question is, so if FURA is asking for $700,000, just looking at the numbers, the low bid from Android was 2.0, we'll call it 2.4, 2.398, and 133,700 for construction of the park, and another 200,000 for furniture equipment and that kind of stuff. So, we're looking at 2.8 ballpark, correct?
Okay, yeah.
FURA has 1.3 on hand and waiting for approval of a million-dollar loan, so that's 2.3. 2.8 minus 2.3 is 500,000. I noticed there's already a 2% contingency built into the resource and cost spreadsheet we got. I'm wondering why they ask for 700 when it seems like we're 500 short?
Up to 700.
Okay.
Up to.
So, are you planning on an extra? It looks like the contingency, the 2% contingency of 50,000 is for those unforeseen costs, so it's already built in there.
Right.
So, but now, it looks like that additional 200,000 is for unforeseen contingency costs?
Okay. I don't have the sheet that you're working out right now.
Can I say something?
Yeah, go ahead.
We keep talking about a million-dollar loan from Umpqua. And when you borrow a million dollars, you typically don't net $1 million.
Right.
Because you're going to have to pay certain origination costs and other, you're just the bond counsel. I'm not sure exactly how much of that $1 million will actually wind up in the overall bank.
They may not use it all.
More than 900,000.
Sure.
It's less than a million. The other thing that I would say, I'm hardly in a position to second-guess Kistner's small and wide project arguaries, but I've done a lot of capital project management. I've never gone into a project with just a 2% contingency. You know, one of the, one of the problems with doing low-bid work, or doing low-bid projects generally, is that the low bidder gets to see how much money they left on the table when the bids are open. And our budget is a public record, and they can see exactly how much money we have available. And I don't want to say that, I don't want to say anything that could be interpreted as being pejorative toward Android's construction. I've done a lot of work with them, and I think they are a superb company. But people look at how much money they left on the table by looking at the other bids, and they try to make it up through change orders. That's just the nature of low-bid work. So, you have to assume that that 2% contingency is going to be spent on change orders and possibly more than 2%. So, this is, this is not an exercise in trying to nickel-and-dime this project.
Sure.
And do it as cheaply as possible. If the city is going to do this project, I urge you to do it right and make sure that it's properly funded.
So, along that mindset, though, if they see there's extra funds, if we approve 700, but there's only 500 needed, aren't they going to see that there's 200K cushion that they have access to along the same mindset?
Could be.
So, I'm wondering, I'm wondering if, so hybridizing tactic one and tactic two, if we can pull 250 from our contingency funds, and then if we get a loan for 250, our costs are going to be a lot less with a much smaller loan, right? And then, anything over that in the future, then we address at future meetings. And so, we don't have that cushion that we motivate to stay more in budget range. I don't know. What do you think?
Yes. I don't disagree with you, and frankly, Ray is probably coming up here to slap me around for even mentioning water fund contingency.
I'm going to report if he runs during the conversation.
One of the other things that you could do is, if you saw my weekly department update, you saw what the first quarterly, first quarter payment was for the marijuana tax. So, just the first quarter payment exceeded what we had budgeted for the entire year.
19K.
Yeah. So, when you get into the spring, you could do a supplemental budget to acknowledge the revenue that you had not budgeted.
Gotcha.
And rebuild your contingency, because the likelihood is that you will have to dip into contingency before the end of the fiscal year. And if we, do you remember how much we took out of contingency?
Much.
It wasn't very much, but it was...
The general fund didn't do any just this previous year. The year before, there was almost 20,000.
So, I mean, it's very common to have to dip into contingency just to balance various department expenditures over the course of the year. There's nothing unusual about that. So, you don't want to take your contingency down to nothing. You want to have something in there.
Go ahead. I just want to speak just real quickly, as we discussed the different options. I'm real nervous about hitting our contingency this early in the year. It's really early in the year. We've got winter coming and early in fiscal year, winter's coming. I think it's dangerous to go very deep, all due respect. And with the raising taxes, it goes to the bottom line of the expense of living fees. I think we're trying to make it easier for people to live here. And it's not much money, granted, but your poor little bit helps, right? But it's just to throw it out there for discussion.
Well, I also want to add, I guess since we're talking about contingencies and things like that, that's the main question that I want to ask about is, I mean, I think that we should have resources that are available to us, but when we talk about the water fund contingency and the fact that that's allocated, isn't that for the water master plan? The $100,000 from the, no?
The master plan's been allocated under the budget itself.
Okay. So, this $100,000 contingency that we're talking about in the water funds, can I ask you, Ray, a little bit about what that might do?
Ray thinks I'll call the board's director. I'm not worried at all about what Dave recommended for getting up to this water fund. I think he's, that he's correct.
Great. And then, when it comes to the, when it comes to the general fund too, I mean, is there any concern from any staff about what that may do to other funding priorities? And Terry, I wanted to mention too, I don't know if you watch Game of Thrones, but some winter is coming.
Oh, no.
Anyway, so, are there big priorities that make a mark this year?
I mean, the reason you budget a contingency is so that when you have unforeseen expenditures through the year, you can balance your budget before you close out the fiscal year. And that's typically what you will do is, just before you get to the end of the fiscal year, your finance director will bring your resolution that says, oh, we overspent this line item, and we overspent this major object category, so we're just going to move money around with money out of contingency, and we'll move money from this major object category, this major object. So, you don't increase your budget. I mean, the amount of money that's in your budget is unchanged. You're simply moving money from one major object category to another and keeping the budget in balance. Typically, in the general fund, if you had a contingency of 2.5% of your projected expenditures, that would be plenty. Your contingency in the general fund is 15%. That's the maximum allowed by law. So, again, I would be, first of all, I agree with Councilor Baker 100%. It's early in the budget cycle to be drawing down your contingency. But even if you drew your general fund contingency down to $80,000, that's still 4% of your requirements, budget requirements. So, it's not a real high-risk move. There are definitely some risks, but at the same time, if we had started the budget cycle with a contingency of just $80,000, we'd be congratulating ourselves on having such a healthy contingent.
Yeah, I mean, when it comes to using the money that's in our contingency funds for this project, I think that we should, I think that we're not doing the residents of Phoenix a lot of service by sitting on the pool of their money. And I think that we have an opportunity here to work on a project that's been in the works for a long time and to use some funding that's available and not being used for other public services to help make that happen and to help get this thing executed. And I think the longer that we sit on this project, the more expensive it becomes. And that's something I worry about too, you know, let's be pragmatic. And I think, I think that that's, the tactic that I'm leaning towards is using our contingency funds, the level that we have, and then borrowing the rest of what we need, simply because I'd like to see this project get executed. And I think that, you know, not only just to have the community center, but we know that that's, the community center itself and that construction is going to spur development in the downtown, which is exactly what we need for our businesses in downtown Phoenix to, you know, get urban renewal kicking and those prices of those properties going up so that they can, you know, get on the, what is it, volunteer that many bashless, it's not a loan, it's a donation, donate. So, I guess that's the direction I'm leaning in terms of moving us forward, getting us going.
I also want to echo that, I think it's an important project. It's something the city's been working on for a long time, and I would love to see this project move forward. I think there's been a lot of hard work done on it, and I think it's a good project for Phoenix. And so, I look forward to trying to make this thing happen. And if we're going to do it, I really do think we should do it, you know, right, with everything that everyone's planned on and designed to put in the building altogether. So, I'd also like to echo, you know, what Sarah's saying about dipping in our contingency funds, because we do have large balances, and I don't think that it does our community justice to be just sitting on that money when it's taxpayer dollars that have been there in the first place.
If I may, we're still in the staff input stage. We still have a couple of comments actually before we get into this debate. So, is there any more staff input?
I think, just real quickly, one of the reasons that Kistner used the 2% contingency was that the bids were going to half the percent of each other. When you get bids that are that tight, and usually your contingency, your perception of contingency is lesser. So, it wasn't that they just said, let's use 2%, make it look small, so it looks good to them. It was because their bids were so tight. We talk about leaving money on the table, it really just wasn't that much out there. But Dave's right, I've never seen a 2% contingency walking into a construction project. So, you know, that might be a little tight, because there are always unforeseens out there. The council's perception or comment about, you know, having an account of money, that is not going to matter to the contractor, whether we say that there's this much money to spend. I don't want to say it won't matter at all, but the reality is, they're going to chase the opportunities that they're going to chase that they feel are appropriate. We have to come up with the money. One of the reasons that it costs more as you go further on into this project lifeline is that they schedule projects out with their crews, their equipment, their financial obligations, their, everything associated with the contractors built off schedules. And if you shift that schedule, which shifts a bunch of other important parts. And we're going to be moving into the winter season, it is going to be a lot harder to work that project in the winter, and it is to be working on right now. So, I already know that it's going to be more difficult for them working into the wet season. So, maybe you know where we started before, beginning, you know, before the beginning of October, quite frankly. So, the project gets more expensive as you're working the site elements in the winter. And they're going to be working in the winter. So, their timeline is relatively short, it's seven months. Get in, get done, get out, you know, so, you know, and that's how they make money, is to keep that schedule tight. And one of the ways to keep that schedule tight is to get as much done before that construction window starts to get out the end. So, that's one of the reasons, I think there's also a furnishing number at the bottom when you look at the map, that's a big, that's a big one as well.
Okay. We have a public comment, I believe, Paul Kay from, no, it's this one.
Paul Kay, 4495 South Pacific, Iowa. Thank you again for you being here and asserting this. A lot of discussion has been about expense. I'd like to call attention, and somehow, it's been called to the income side of it. As an investor in property, it's risky to be the first, to be the pioneer. And the marketing of the FURA properties is very difficult to do without a black and white, a concrete commitment by the city of Phoenix saying, the community center will happen, here's when it's going to happen, we're committed to this project. Then it will become a magnet for offers, I believe. And as I mentioned, I think strategically, pulling the properties for sale off of the market so they don't continue to be old news, pulling them... so they don't continue to be old news, pull them off the market for sale until after, some months after the commencement of construction. So they become more desirable and then reevaluate the market. And we could justify a price increase. The properties pencil, they're a great deal. I have no question in my mind that the vultures are circling just waiting for you to be a little bit more distressed to drop the price. And they're going to regret not jumping on these properties at the current price. That's just based on a career of experience. Another part of the income is the systems development charges. Please make a policy that no systems development charges will be waived or conceded, including permit fees will not be waived or conceded to incentivize property sales. I'm getting ready to construct the project and we're happy to pay our systems development charges. We recognize the responsibility to support the public infrastructure. It's, it's not fair that if some get the concessions and some don't. So I do not want to be put at a competitive advantage, a competitive disadvantage, I'm sorry. And, and a deferral of systems development charges you were discussing, this is something that we requested and the response was it has to be tied to the building permit, the issuance of building permit because there's no other regulatory teeth or to assure compliance. You, I would love to see it tied to occupancy permit so that you can, that the developer investor can delay, not delay the timing of the payment of systems development charges until there's actually income from leases. That would be very helpful. But if, if, if systems development charges are going to be deferred for FIRA or purchasers of FIRA property, it should be deferred to us too. And I'm happy to work on crafting brainstorming language to that effect, just, just so long as it's there. So I really, please, make a policy, there should be no deferral of systems development charges, concession or waiver. Now, FIRA volunteers, board, staff have worked tirelessly on the downtown redevelopment. This, this is, this is the golden egg for the whole community. Let's see it go forward, but financially, conservatively, and knowing that property sales are going to cover it. I've discussed ways of enhancing the value of the property sales and, and I recommend strongly to help with the marketing. I would like to see on the City of Phoenix website and on FIRA's website, a page devoted to the community center that also advertises the properties for sale. It's not impossible to find the listings for the properties of FIRA for sale, but it's nearly impossible. The, the, the ease of marketing or the ease of access to information is really helpful. People know this as the City of Phoenix project, even though it's legally in FIRA's name. Phoenix Community Center, properties for sale, yeah, those are the searches that'll get you to the property and build that excitement. So I encourage you to require, to provide, to supplement the marketing through the City of Phoenix website and direct links on the FIRA website rather than just the tax records, the property records, but actually to the, to the marketing efforts. That would, that would be very helpful. It would make it easier to, to find. And then in the systems development charges, one of the things in the income side of the equation that isn't budgeted is the systems development charges that we will be paying. They're not, they're not of small consequence and that will, that will help rebuild some of your reserves. So I feel very confident in recommending approval and going forth with the conditions like I suggested and the conditions are, one, two, three, withdraw FIRA lands from being offered for sale until not less than four months after commencement of construction of the Phoenix Community Center. Two, reevaluate the offering price within one month prior to returning properties to market. That would be, FIRA would be evaluating control with the city council. And three, prohibit financial concessions by the City of Phoenix to incentivize sale, including any reduction below scheduled amounts for systems development charges, permits, et cetera. Thank you. Do you have any questions?
That was the only person I had listed. Does anybody else who wants to speak to this subject? If not, I'm going to close the public hearing section of this. Councillor, time for discussion. Who's first?
Well, I already said my piece before we move on it, but I think it's important that we get the ball rolling on this and that it's something a little better for the people of Phoenix and that we should, we should help FIRA be successful right now.
I think on the real estate side of things with the property list, I think those are FIRA board decisions just so we're all aware of that.
That was not stated. That's exactly what I was thinking.
Just for clarification there.
I'd like to see the project move forward as a matter of where to get the money. I'm reassured by raised reassurance that, you know, if you go, you know, the water contingency fund. I am nervous about it. It's so early in the year. We had a pretty tough winter last year for that expensive order we're expecting. And if that happens again, I just want to make sure we're okay. I know we're financially sound and all. I don't think, I'd like us to borrow money to do it though. We have the money. Borrowing money so that we can borrow money. I mean, I'm just your logic thing. It doesn't sound, if I wrote that on a piece of paper over the pool of shit.
Well, I comment, part of the problem, and it's a good problem to have, is that the City of Phoenix has very large sums of money in unappropriated fund balances. And you can't spend the money in an unappropriated fund balance. And you would have no way of appropriating the money in the unappropriated fund balance until next year. So theoretically, if, if you took kind of about twice as much in your general fund, fund balance as we need for the financial policies adjusted often. And you have this very large contingency. Have money to probably provide everything FIRA needs without having to borrow any money. The problem again is the fund balance is unappropriated to.
Can you get that straight? So I'm hearing, make sure I'm tracking what you mean. If we needed more money for a contingent occurrence than we had, we would have the money to appropriate it from you too. We could do that?
Not from the fund balance until next year. But what, what you could do is you could do a supplemental budget. I wouldn't recommend doing it until the spring, if you have a better idea of what your financial situation is. But you could do a supplemental budget to recognize marijuana tax revenue that was not budgeted. So that, the supplemental budget process is means by which you can recognize unanticipated revenue received during the fiscal year and appropriate and spend it during the same fiscal year. You can't move money out of an unappropriated fund balance.
So it sounds like you could do it without borrowing.
Probably not. But what, what you could do, what you could do is, is start appropriating the money in the next fiscal year, appropriate the money that's in your unappropriated fund balance and use that to make principal payments or to simply pay off the loan altogether once you get past the prepayment penalty phase of the loan.
Is there a way we can write that as a plan that you resist, to distract? That's appropriate, isn't it?
We'd have to do a supplemental budget in spring.
Yeah, well, there, there is no way to appropriate an unappropriated fund balance. The only way that you can appropriate an unappropriated fund balance is in a declared disaster. So if the governor declares Phoenix a statutory disaster area by law, then you can appropriate your unappropriated fund balance. But that's all hope and pray. That's not going to happen.
Right, yeah, 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 yeah. Well, you hope and hope, but if it does, you'd be very.
So what happens, if we do, say we do move this money from the contingency funds and we do run out of contingency dollars, what happens with that? Again, I would recommend that you do a supplemental budget to recognize the revenue. It wouldn't be a long time. Well, you could do it at any time. Okay, gotcha. You'd have a better idea in the spring of exactly how much money you receive. Sure. My thoughts on it, I agree. I think it's a huge centerpiece of our city and I think it's going to breed a lot of activity in community. I think it's something definitely we need to do. My thing is, my concerns are being fiscally responsible with it. We have some other needs as well as a new police station. I think that's a big, a big need. We really need to think about and prioritize. City Hall needs some help too to increase the working functionality there and the workspace. So I worry if we get too big a loan, it's going to make it more difficult in the future to do those projects. But that being said, I, I want to move forward with this and make sure that we're able to support FIRA. Is it necessary to do 700 now? Because the shortfall is 501,766. If we can do 250, I mean, at 251,766, we covered what's on the spreadsheet. I was thinking too. So we're just adding an extra 200K for potential contingencies is what I'm seeing. But we're in the meantime paying the debt service on that $200,000 also. I, I think it would be fair to say that we're not sure how much we need to borrow. Just sure. The project, the project needs at least 500,000 and possibly as much as 700,000. And that's, that was the analysis that I was kind of hoping that we would have for you this evening. Because all we've got is this spreadsheet. And that's looking at the numbers. That's what the numbers are telling me. What, what you, what you could do, someone could make a motion directly staff to bring you a resolution at your next meeting, moving money out of contingency and creating a new line item for a donation to FIRA. And that, that takes care at least of the cash portion. And then directing us to continue to work with banks on loan terms, but to borrow no more than is necessary for continued discussion with FIRA based on how much they need. Okay. My other question is about the backside of this. So we're doing Eden Kind donations, kind of donating this to FIRA. And at the tail end of that, FIRA is going to donate the proceeds of the property back to the city. Correct. Plus, they're going to make another generous donation to compensate us for the interest and. The interest, the debt service. I heard a call definitely, the properties are definitely going to sell more after that. Resources available for the community value is going to increase. How, what's the, not to say, you know, what's the enforceability of that? The return donation? Well, presumably we're going to have a contractual agreement with FIRA and the contract is enforceable in the same manner as any other contract. Okay. So it is in your contractual agreement. Okay.
It's not strategic.
So I want to make sure.
And also, all of the, whatever else is on the FIRA board, we do have to control there as well. That's kind of the important thing about keeping councillors on board. Yes, right. And it's a great thing to do. I would make the case that it makes more sense for us to borrow 500 and to keep the contingencies there for additional funds. Because if we take, if we go down your road and find out that we need an additional 200,000 to finish the project, it's going to be more pitiful to come up with that 200 short of going back to the book and making for another loan. Whereas if we could take the full fund as a loan in the first place, then we'd have this contingency to work from. We wouldn't have to remove it necessarily. Or, but if we, you know, if we didn't, then we'd use that money to start, you know, paying off the loan after, of course, the loan repayment terms.
Now, the extra contingency funds, can we move those with the other general funds? We're not using with the new budget cycle next year? And then use those monies to direct towards police or city hall improvements, those kind of things?
Yes.
Okay. That would be an interesting option.
Better not borrow the money, but it sounds like, to me, that makes more sense. So we had, you know, if they do need 700, then at least we would have 700 there for the project.
Or we could borrow 200. We had, we put up five, right? No loan. We're saving that much debt service cost. And if we need more, if we could borrow 700, I'm sure we could borrow 200.
I don't think we're going to be able to put up 500.
I don't think we put up that much. About 250 or 260.
It's 250 here and then the other one last thing goes borrowing 250. In our contingency plan, we give, 250 is what Dave is recommending to save. But there's other money set aside we can't use till next year.
I may interrupt for just a second. Off processes, I think the first hurdle is, do we wish to conceptually provide funding in the form of a donation to FIRA? Not how much, just do we wish to, I think I'm real lucky.
Yeah, we're all the same.
The next question is, how much do we wish to do that in? Not how we're going to get the money, how much, that around 500,000, 700,000. The fact is, the numbers have never been calculated. It's well enough to know. I've asked for that and it has not been provided to us. So we don't actually know. If we take that sheet and tear it out, I wouldn't trust it at this point. Nobody has verified the numbers for it. But if you make an assumption that 700 is probably a good number. Then the next question is, where is money coming from? I've heard discussion from our own little kitty, we're borrowing from, or Salem was a taxation type of thing. If nobody wants a taxation, then we go back to owing money and/or to borrowing. The one thing I haven't heard discussed, which I think really should be thought about is in the flow process of the money out of our account. I think FIRA should start, is my thing, FIRA should start making the payments on the contract with their own kitty of money. And then use the money from the loan from Unkwa. And then use money from us further down the line toward the end of the process. That means we don't have to actually transfer any money to them until later in the process, although we're committed to do that. But I think getting their own, being financially straight on how much money they actually have, that of their, all the money that they have, that they can contribute to this process, I'm talking FIRA. And then the actual amount of money we're getting from Unkwa and have that money in their kitty. Because contractually, you want to be able to fulfill that contract. Commit ourselves to do something, like committing that we're going to do it in segments or tranches further on down projects, our money stays in our account until the last one, I thought. But I think we have to get through all of those kinds of hurdles here tonight. And then the first one is, you know, I think a commitment, do we wish to do this? And if we have a motion to do that, then we can move on and think to the other contingencies on the thing.
I'll make a motion, make a motion that the City of Phoenix move to support FIRA's building of the community center.
Second, roll call.
Councillor Cameron?
Yes.
Councillor Westover?
Yeah.
Councillor Warren?
Yes.
Councillor Baker?
Yes.
Councillor Schump?
Yes.
Is that a motion we just think, I'm sorry?
Just in terms, sorry, because we didn't get to discuss that. I'm wondering, does that motion, does that help? So, because we said support, but we didn't talk about financially, to get a loan to or a donation to.
I think that would figure out the business, right? How to do it.
Yeah.
Well, can I, can I, how about this? If we're going to narrow it down. Can I make a motion to not pursue any new revenue sources in the form of water surcharges to contribute to this?
Wait, say that one more time.
I make a motion to not pursue additional taxes or surcharges to pay for this, support of FIRA.
I'll second.
Sorry, I made it a convoluted.
So I, I just want to clarify, I want to make sure I know what we're voting on. So you're saying that no new taxes for this project?
Absolutely.
And then what do you mean by surcharges?
Well, that's what we're talking about. A surcharge of a dollar per month. It was tactic three.
I just wanted to clarify.
So I just wanted to get us away from that officially. Because it sounds like we don't want to do.
Do we need a motion on that?
You may.
And if we're making motions for other things, then.
Let's go. Motion, what's that again about?
Can I make one request that you amend your motion to clarify that we're not going to, you know, raise taxes to fund the community center project specifically so it doesn't tire our hands moving down the road to another project?
I accept your amendment.
Motion, David, are driving you crazy? Are we still good?
Yes.
Discussion ended? Roll call.
Counselor Shunk?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Counselor Westover?
Yeah.
Counselor Warren?
Yes.
Counselor Baker?
Yes.
And not a maximum amount, we wish to contribute in this process at some point.
I'm sorry, say again.
So a motion for the maximum amount that we would be willing to contribute, not how we're getting it, just the maximum.
My thought is, up to 500,000, every, anything over 500,000 has to be brought to council for discussion. But then again.
We don't have accurate numbers. I have a problem with that, we've got the numbers without accurate information. But we're gonna need our own staff to get accurate information.
We have.
This is as good as it gets.
No, no, it has to get better once the numbers are done.
I mean, that's what I'm saying.
It didn't get done for us tonight, so we're kind of.
Okay, and I understand that. I mean, no, I mean, no, nothing bad.
What's your sensing of how much you'd be willing to do, even the maximum?
I don't see the numbers.
I mean, it really depends on what they need. And, it says, you know, up to 700,000 because that's FIRA's best estimate of what they may need at the given time. I, I guess I have more questions in terms of this specific one. How soon does FIRA need to know the exact dollar amount of how much we're, we're willing to, to make the loan for? Does that make a difference in the timeline?
Well, September 25th is the deadline.
And the, and.
To Adroit.
To Adroit.
So we were trying to back up from that and see what the commitment would be from the city.
How long is feasible to have a detailed understanding of how much money is, is needed?
Well, our interim executive director there, Mr. Cameron, is working that in here now.
Can you switch a seat on there?
I, I would say it's clear that FIRA needs at least 500,000.
Okay.
That's, that's my reading of it. Adroit's bid is not gonna change. The cost of the SDCs is not gonna change. The contingency number is not gonna change. Those numbers are fixed. The cost of the furnishings, because we haven't bid out the furnishings yet, so we don't know exactly what the furnishing costs, the number that you see on your spreadsheet, those clearly are just estimates. And could be more, could be less. You know, again, I would strongly advise you to do it right, not do it cheap.
Sure. But that's a bridge we can cross down the road to the furnishing, that's the last hurdle.
Cross further down the road, which actually speaks to the idea of, okay, let's borrow enough money to do the construction. Let's figure out how much we need to do the construction and fill in that gap with city, with the city donation. And then you could actually use the contingency money for the furnishings and the kitchen equipment.
Cause we'll be at that point at the end of the construction process.
Right, exactly.
I like that. Now, is it possible to structure the loan as a line of credit where we don't start making interest payments until we draw the money from the bank? Just have it accessed? Because if we're gonna be paying adroit per month. You know, I haven't talked to the bank about that, but one of the things you need to understand about these types of capital projects is, you pay a lot of money in the beginning, and then the amount you pay declines, so that the last, you know, in the last couple of months of the project, the billings that you're getting from the contractor are relatively small. But in the beginning, when, when you're doing the excavation and you're creating the foundations and you're getting the building out of the ground, that's where the contractors cost them. It's not, it's not the finished work we're doing yet.
I guess one alternative may be to make a motion to the city staff and FIRA to come up with accurate numbers and bring those back to us. We would have to meet again fairly soon if we're to meet the timelines.
Well, I'm not sure that's necessary, I was just curious if it was possible to get the numbers sooner, but if we're sure, you know, it sounds like from Dave's accounting that we're sure they're gonna need at least 500,000, so I think that that's a fair starting place, and I, I think that, you know, like Mike said, that we can always come back in the event that urban renewal needs more and have that discussion at that time. Is there, I mean, does anybody foresee any big glaring problems with just starting at 500?
That would satisfy the adroit bid. Correct. And we could give them the go-ahead and we could break ground and get credit.
Again, assuming that Umpqua.
Umpqua. And Umpqua would know that we've made up the financing gap also, that would make them feel a little better, it is.
They're monitoring what you're doing.
Yes, that's what I was.
So that would help the process. They're listening to you, okay?
That's, that's the process.
Okay.
Well, we're definitely gonna support the project, you know, so if we start at 5, we have to go up.
So, what if, is it possible to make a motion, decommit to 500,000 contribution towards the project to be structured as a combination of possible contingency plans or loans at a future meeting? Or do we have to actually structure how we wanna do it right now?
Trust me, I'm not signing any loan documents unless there's a council motion approving them. So one way or another, it's coming back to the council if you have to.
Yeah, right. I think we gotta do 700. Just make the same roll forward.
Well, if we did the 700, it's possible to direct the staff to come up with the right number and not exceed whatever that number is after they've communicated to us. But it could be 400, it could be 800, whatever, but we started maximum. And then let them do math and vote the loan up to, we're gonna need eight possible.
Since we've resolved to support FIRA this no matter what, is it absolutely ever so necessary that we vote on a number tonight without the actual origination of those? I hate to do that.
Well, it sounds, like, might be necessary, though, is like where the money is coming from.
That's a different question, that's a good question, that's a different one. We need to know how much.
I think it's 101 before, on FIRA's deadline with the contract, they need to know that number.
Without question, but I make sure I have.
Access to the money to complete the contract.
Correct.
If you don't do it tonight, you're gonna have to do it fairly soon.
Next meeting.
Except for that we don't have a meeting for our next.
Right now, we don't have anything scheduled for 5 September, two weeks later, which is only about, what, a week before the meeting's gonna come.
14.
Well, you certainly, I mean, I worry you all about who's available on this, on the 5th of September, and you're all available. I don't know about Sydney. So we certainly could have another meeting on September 5th. Yeah. The way this meeting is going, maybe that means a continued discussion of items that are on the side of it. But, one way or another, the loan documents are gonna have to come back to you. So what I would suggest we could do is nail down with FIRA, I, I saw some head nods around the table, the idea of borrowing the money just for the construction and then using the contingency money in the spring for furnishings and kitchen equipment. So we could nail down exactly how much money they need just to do the construction and borrow that much money for the donation to FIRA. Work up the contract for the mutual exchange donation, and that will have to come back to you as well. So, it would certainly not be my intent anyway to borrow any more than what's necessary to simply do the construction. And I think that's probably gonna be 500,000 or less. Well.
I feel really comfortable with that.
Yeah, that gives us 500, and then we can discuss the rest at a later date when we have more access to budget discussion also.
Yeah.
And we'll know our contingency will be through later at that point.
Right.
So I make a, I'll, I make a motion to gather information for a 500,000 loan and to donate that money towards FIRA for the building of our community center. Is that traction probably?
I would say up to, up to 500,000.
Second. Any more discussion? Roll call.
Counselor Baker?
Yes.
Counselor Shunk?
Yes.
Counselor Snyder?
Not voting.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Counselor Westover?
Yes.
Counselor Warren?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Al, for all your efforts and work on this. I know it's a labor of love, for sure.
Thank you very much.
You want us to get a bench, we can put like a plaque on it.
Definitely. We'll discuss that, see you.
We're kind of under budget, but I will get you a plan.
Yeah, we'll have the money for a plaque.
Is there any more discussion on this particular item for FIRA before we move on? Looking at the time, it's now 8:30, we need to return on 9, unless we tend. I suggest maybe we take a couple of the ordinance readings and move them up before we get into the, clarify the policy rules, but that's gonna be a follow-up section. I make sure we can finish the committee for the story, any suggestions? Why don't we do, I think, what may be the easiest one first, number nine delta, first reading title only of large social gaming on page 92. And then we'll catch up.
So, Mr. Mayor, just the presiding officer, excuse me. This is an ordinance that council directed us to develop at your last meeting. We tried to keep it as simple as possible, it simply allows social gaming per ORS 167 in the city of Phoenix. And we did include all of the items that the council requested that we include in there, so he must be 21 years of age. We did put the language about providing for non-investing players who want to use the facility. There is the language that requires that the police be permitted to have access to the facility at all times. And we put in separation length, so that it must be at least 250 feet from any presidential zone and 1,000 feet from any other social gaming facility. We actually put the language almost verbatim from previously adopted cannabis facility ordinance. We just changed cannabis facility to social gaming facility and prompted this ordinance. Otherwise, it's very simple, very straightforward. We didn't put any licensing permission or any other ORS provisions that we saw in some of the cities.
I don't have anyone signed up in public, any discussion accomplished.
It looks like a section is missing, is that me? Between 93 and 94? It was 93 and 94. Got this 5.24.030, definitions A, B, C. We got 5.24.040, responsibilities of operator, and we start the lowercase minimum. Does appear that we lost the new page, so hang on a second. Is that the case in the paper copy as well?
Yeah, the paper copy, the correct page number to the bottom, but it ends with 4. It starts in the middle of the sentence, CD, and then E and F are not in there.
Well, I suspect that we had a double-sided copy there, and when we created the packet, only one side of the page was copied.
Does that, 10% goes to Dave Kenner?
Yeah. It is, it is a three-page ordinance, it looks like there's only two pages in there.
I have to bring it back for next time.
So we have to bring it back?
I believe we do have to bring it back. I don't think you can vote on an ordinance that we have not published. Sorry about that. But if you have a meeting on September 5th, you can bring it back for first reading.
Yes, so it's only two, is it?
Everyone agree?
Agreed.
Yes. I do have, just a quick question. The 250 feet from residence, how do they measure that? Is that from the front door, or is that from?
It, it's actually spelled out on the last page of the ordinance, they have exactly how we measure.
Page 23. Right. Property, yeah, property line.
Okay. Let's do 9A, second reading of public hearing of ordinance 979, appointing Mr. Title V of the Phoenix Municipal. On page 70.
And this is an ordinance that simply changes one word in the existing ordinance, changes it from regulatory to registration. There are no changes in the ordinance since first reading.
No one from the public signed up? Discussion from council? Everybody's good, have a motion?
For a little second reading by title only of ordinance, many title V of the Phoenix Municipal.
Second.
Any more discussion? Roll call.
Counselor Warren?
Yes.
Counselor Baker?
Yes.
Counselor Shunk?
Yes.
Counselor Snyder?
Not voting.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Counselor Westover?
Yes.
Okay, 9B, second reading and public hearing of ordinance 980, vacating public right-of-way. Anyone from the staff?
Kevin McKenzie, planning director, try to keep this short and sleek. There's a 15-foot right-of-way that goes into a piece of property that is owned by the urban renewal agency. It is too narrow to build a street in, has never been improved. The city has no plans to improve it, the city has no utilities in it, it's just there. There's no reason to keep it. The council did receive some testimony earlier regarding the, the need to vacate this at this time. In simplest terms, we, we are doing a quitclaim of right-of-way. We do, we do not need it. If there is contrary evidence as to whether or not we actually have it at the county recorder, this will formally express our wish not to have it and absolve the city of responsibility for maintaining it, so that it can be sold together with the property that it is, appears to be attached to. That is all. Unless there's questions.
Any questions, staff? I believe we have one person from the audience who wishes to speak. Okay.
Paul K, 4495 South Pacific Highway, Phoenix. Thank you again for all you're doing. I gave some written comments to you, and where they came from, when I read in the, as you gather by now, I, I read the packets, and I see, and I saw for reasons unknown, there's a remnant right-of-way and unable to make a determination regarding which parcel it was dedicated from. Like, well, that sounds like a thoroughly fun puzzle. I enjoy property research, as you can tell. And it's, first of all, I am not an attorney, and I'm experienced in reading property conveyances and reading legal descriptions and mapping them out. But again, I'm not a qualified professional, I'm not a surveyor, but I can read instructions. I'm convinced that that proper, that that parcel does belong, or is very likely still belongs to tax lot 500. And according to ORS, it has to go back to 500 unless 500 releases it. I may be wrong in this, because there's, there's a whole history to compile, but I haven't compiled, and I, I don't care to do that. But I believe that there's an easy fix for 500 to relinquish any claim by quitclaim deed. It doesn't do any harm or cost to do that. However, if you sell tax lot 500, and then within the statutory time period, whoever acquires tax lot 500 says, hey, wait a second, this vacation was done contrary to Oregon revised statutes, we have a claim to that. It puts a, it puts a cloud of title on both 500 and 600, which depresses value to both, and as you heard and all agree, or we talked about earlier, you wanna maximize the value of FIRA lands for sale. The attorney's not here, so, the city attorney's not here, so he can't comment on this. The attorney's not here, so, the city attorney's not here, so he can't comment on this. I believe there's a simple fix, and I encourage you to take your time and take care of that simple fix, too. Plus, there's another potential inadvertent error. I see a hundred and seventy-two feet and change as a length on the assessor's map. One property boundary is a hundred and eighty-nine. I don't know where I came up with a hundred and eighty on the other, but a trap is always to figure the areas happen. So I gave area calculations in my, in my communication to you. So I, I don't know if the property is properly researched. I don't know if the property is accurately described. And it would be premature to um, make that conveyance or even a quitclaim without being a hundred percent sure of accuracy, of a pertinence and accuracy of size. Do you have any questions? All right. Thank you very much for your consideration. I hope you can clear it quickly.
Anyone else in the public who should speak? If not, in the public hearing portion. Now, councilors, may we discuss?
Do we have any way of knowing at this particular, whether or not uh, the concerns that Paul raised are accurate? If anyone want to weigh in? I'm challenging you, the Paul, I just want to share.
Kevin McKenzie, planning director. Um, absent a dedication deed or other document showing specifically how that came to be, um, it is difficult to say. One could make the argument that that property was dedicated from tax lot six hundred. If you're looking on the second page of the agenda report, those dashed lines are old property lines from when this was originally platted. And you can see them running down the entire block. And so technically, those lots still exist. But five hundred has consolidated portions of two and lots and one smaller one into a single tax lot. So technically, tax lot five hundred is, may actually still be described as three lots. So, but of course, you'd see that fifteen feet of tax lot five hundred, the southern portion or the eastern, depending on how you want to look at it, um, would have come off the adjoining lot uh, at some point, uh, which has also been reconfigured to form a new tax ID. But that lot also contains um, lots thirteen and fourteen of the previous subdivision. It's somewhat complicated. It may require a little additional research to determine exactly where that, I mean, if the council wishes to have additional research done on this. However, um, where, we're in pretty good shape is that HIRA controls um, both properties, so both budding property owners are saying, um, this property will likely be re- reconfigured before it is sold to accommodate a potential buyer. And so we may well be doing a replat that would fix any of the concerns or vacate all previous property lines anyway. I'll just add a note, uh, regarding the question of the area, um, if you look at the map, the measurement is a hundred and eighty-nine feet uh, for the northern property boundary of lot six hundred. That hundred and eighty-nine feet extends down below that little bend there. You'll notice on six oh one, it's one hundred feet deep, but on five hundred, it's a hundred and twenty feet deep. So if you add another twenty to that one seventy-two and take away the difference out there, there three, looks like it does come up to about a hundred and eighty-nine feet. It's kind of a regular shaped. How it got that way, who knows? It is what it is. I understand the concerns. I don't think in this particular case, especially with the budding property owners being the same, that um, it's, it's a barrier to approval.
If I could add one thing, more than one thing. Well, I appreciate the research. Mr. Kay did. The last deed in the chain of title was produced. By the way, shows dedication to the state highway commission, which I assume at some point in time, dedicated property to the city. There is indisputable evidence that the assessor's map shows a fifteen-foot right-of-way in that location. That is, is beyond question. So in, in my mind, there's no question that a fifteen-foot right-of-way exists in that location. And that the city of Phoenix is within its rights to vacate it and assign the property to new budding property owners. However, um, if you want your hour attorney or a HIRA's attorney to take a look at it and bring it back, I'd be able to do that.
It, it sounds to me like, while I appreciate Paul's um, comments, it sounds to me like things are in order based on what staff has said here today. So I'm willing to move forward and make the motion that um, we approve uh, the second reading of our title only of an ordinance of the city of Phoenix vacating the public right-of-way located between tax lots five hundred, six hundred on assessor map thirty-eight dash one, west of oh nine double B, with all bays fee and lands attached to tax lot six hundred.
Any more discussion? Roll call.
Council Westover?
Yes.
Council Warren?
Yes.
Council Baker?
Yes.
Council Shunk?
Yes.
Council Snyder?
Not moved.
Council Cameron?
Yes.
We have one more, more trying. We have staff reports, city attorney bill, and a few city manager and the council mayor comments. For humanitarian reasons, may I, without causing another eclipse, bring Carolyn's case forward before we go any further, since she'd be at home.
I'm second that.
Okay, council is ready.
So remind us again, so, did you bring us documentation today?
I brought you the um...
Sorry, you might be very... Oh, this is just the one, okay.
It's an invoice of what the cost is. It's um, we're doing a triple, you know, doing the triple fun. We're having a snow cone machine, uh, an obstacle course, and a water slide. And it's going to be fun, fun, fun.
Any staff comments?
Oh, I'm going to sound like the Grinch. I think I know where you're going. I, I recommend saying no to this request. It's not, it's not a comment on the merits of Phoenix counseling center or event or work venue on behalf of the community. However, there's very fundamental principle with regards to public resources. We don't, we don't give away, whether it's a job, or a property, or it's a contract, or it's a grant. We don't give away public resources without some kind of competitive process. And I think um, to Carolina's credit, she has learned that if she shows up at a council meeting and says, can I have some money, please? More often than not, you say yes. And um, would other nonprofits like the same president, who are showing up at a council meeting and asking for money? I'm sure they would. They just don't know that they can do that. So I, I think it, you know, my, my recommendation is simply a matter of principle with regard to how do we disperse public resources, and then not a commentary on, on what they're doing. You know, could, could we find a few hundred dollars in the budget? Again, we didn't budget for this. Take it from somewhere else. If you think you're going to underspend a particular line item somewhere in general fund, you just take the money from that. But again, I, I think there's a, a principle here that we budget for expenditures, and if we're going to make grants to organizations, it's through a competitive process of some kind.
And that's it? That's a good point. We've never really had a discussion uh, as the council. We just, since I've been on council, people have been coming to the council with requests for money, so I assumed it was kind of standard. But I, do other cities have processes where they give to community groups that foster like a sense of community? Could we create a grant program that we actually budget for? The other cities do things like that? Have you experienced? Or is this pretty, is there a separation here between?
Well, there, there are a few communities that do grant programs that um, I, I think that many, many cities that had grant programs did away with them during the recession. Because when money is tight, typically, grant programs like that is the first thing that gets cut. Ashland and Carvalis still have grant programs. Those are two that I'm aware of. I don't know how many other cities are still doing grant programs.
And I do want to clarify, it's not the Phoenix Counseling Center. It's the First Phoenix Community Center. And it is, we do have our own nonprofits staff separate from the churches. It is not a church function. It is a community center function. In case.
And we did, I think, Carolina, we, I mixed up this. We had two separate requests from community groups today for funding.
Right.
Um, and haven't ever had the conversation as councils, like, where's that money coming from? When we give community groups money? Um, and do we even have a fund set up for it, which we don't? Which is a, a good conversation to be having. That being said, I, I think that that's something that I would like to see us do, to, even if it's a small amount, to foster a sense of community, um, and to create community where, you know, it can be kind of disparadic in small rural towns, um, is helpful. So I would like to see us create that, but I don't know where that leaves us for right now. If we don't have a, a source of funding that we can allocate from. Where did we allocate it from last time?
I think we took it out of the advertising, promoting fund. Well, it was, how much was it? Fifty bucks for hamburgers or something?
Thirty, thirty-six dollars.
Thirty-six. So thirty-six dollars is one thing, but we're talking five hundred, and it's a little different factor. Yeah.
Well, one thing I do want to say, I, I wish that we had had this conversation earlier about like what our goal is in terms of, because Carolina did bring this to us last meeting, and then we're having the conversation now. So apologies for that, for having you bring it in as a conversation item and then bringing you it again. And I cut it on the agenda, so um, that, I'll take responsibility for that. Is there a way, so what is the? What, so it's just, it's a community event?
Yeah, we're having a back-to-school clothing giveaway in carnival. It's our third annual.
Okay.
So folks come and they get a bag of clothes, and then we feed them, and then we throw them down the slide, and then I compete with Cindy's sister. It will be my third year win in the obstacle course. And we have games and um, uh, yeah, the clothing giveaway, the games, the slide, and the free food. And it just, each year gets bigger. The first year, it was, it was pretty well attended. Last year, much more people. And this year, we're doing a lot more advertising. We've got it out on Facebook and in the paper and stuff, so we're hoping for even more.
Our focus is for the clothes giveaway for the kids.
And school. And backpacks and some wool supplies for them if you've got them.
And not only for the kids, but for adults and for all ages is what our focus is. We bring all the clothes down from the clothes closet, but we're getting lots of donations this year um, for all ages for, um, but that is our main focus.
Uh, never use socks and underwear. Very important.
Do you guys have other sources of revenue available to you? I'm sort of hungry, but...
Yeah, we have, uh, well, and basically, everything else is taken care of. We've got, we've got the hot dogs and buns. We've got the beverages. We've got ice. We've got um, clothes. We've got um, Alfred's going to their cook. Um, we've got, you know, and we do, we've been going around two different businesses, and we've, we've raised about a hundred bucks. So we've got that. And, but yeah, this event. And if, if you guys don't give it to us, we'll do it. We'll do it out of our pockets. And, and Dave, you guys have said no to me way more than you said yes. So you, you're not the only guy. You're not the Grinch. There's, you know, so...
Because people that attend from all over the valley who just strictly limited to our city folks.
Everybody. And we get people as far away as Crescent City coming to the um, to the, the food uh, and clothing closet. Last year, it was mostly Phoenix people, but you know, we let town people come. We let the Ashland folks come. We're pretty open, yes. And, and we do.
We could advertise our city as part of your donation, or what you're donating to the public. Advertising our city, a place to come to.
I'm sorry, what was that again?
Yeah.
That since you do it not just for the city, but you do it for wider audience, that perhaps we could all, somehow, the city could be advertised as a great place to live and be.
Yes, that's sure. I mean, it, it, you know, we always say that, you know, the answer to the things. Yes.
But the, yeah, as I always say, we go to the schools and we talk to the schools about the clothes giveaway. Um, but yeah, the focus is helping the city folks here in our, in our, and here in the city.
We had a good connection with the superintendent of the schools, and he was able to get it on all the websites, all of the, the elementary schools in this district and the high school and the middle school. And I've gone to the, they're having band camp this week, and I've been going there and talking, you know.
Talking to Norton Number, Norman Number, Noel Leslie, um, just trying to get the word out, because a lot of people don't know that we're there.
Well, and you say the Phoenix Community Center, and they think the, it's built. It's like, yeah, it's been here for ten years. You know, but they do, they do think about it as being the plaza, the plaza building and their, you know. And it is um, sometimes hard to get folks in the door when they, they know it's housed in a church. They don't think of it as a community center until they come in. And then they realize that, yes, it is their community center. So that's a little bit of a hard sell sometimes, but...
Understood. Well, back to council, any thoughts?
Did the city fund this last year?
Nope. We did. Out of our pockets.
It used to be the city would provide meat for the kickoff. For the commu, they would, they would supply the hamburgers and hot dogs for the kickoff, but they stopped doing that because of, somebody like me woke up and said, uh-uh.
Uh, we are upon the nine o'clock hour, and we take a motion to extend beyond from nine to nine thirty. A majority vote. Do we wish to extend? Do we wish to finish up here in the next couple minutes and go? Thoughts? So we're planning meeting the fifth. Right now, it's an open date with no agenda. We are meeting a week before that for the strategic plan section, which is an all-night session.
So the agenda item that's left over is the agenda item that I've been waiting four months to discuss. Four months. And I'm, I'm happy to, again, if we are actually going to have the discussion this time, and if we're actually going to meet on the fifth, then I'm happy to say, then let's postpone to a date certain for September fifth. But if that conversation doesn't happen, it's going to be very, very intense.
We could extend tonight for half an hour. Get started, but I think with the volume of stuff we have, we're going to carry along along half an hour.
Yeah.
We haven't finished the topic here. We haven't done a couple of discussions.
I'm going to extend the meeting to nine thirty.
Is it second?
Second.
Roll call.
Council Cameron?
Yes.
Council Westover?
Yes.
Council Warren?
Yes.
Council Baker?
Yes.
Council Shunk?
Yes.
Okay, we're still on the same subject here. I would be dedicating several votes.
How much do we spend on events? Just out of curiosity, how much do we spend on like city events, like dog days of summer and things like that, that are also intended for like community building? Anybody have?
I think, dog days, we spent six hundred and ninety-nine.
Let's, I know that it's different in the city.
I think we budgeted about a thousand dollars for community events. Is that what I'd like to know?
Yeah. So I, I wonder if there's anything left for a community event, if there's an opportunity to maybe not fund this entire request, but to fund it in part, and then to also perhaps like have a table there for the city of Phoenix. Would that be something that you all would... Would that be something that you all would?
Oh, I'm hoping Chris will do the snowplows in Sierra if they're back in town in time. Yes.
Is that, do you see, I mean, again, is that a problem under?
I, I, you can always overspend a line item. I don't know how much we've spent out of that line item or what else is committed from that line item. But again, if, if you want to fund it, I wouldn't worry too much about where the money is coming from. It's not a budget busting amount of money. I guess. No, I'm close at my.
I mean, hey, I don't know, I want to hear from other people. If they're willing to give a little space.
I think we haven't funded it in the past. And I think that it would be, setting a new precedent to fund it now without the conversation about what do we fund as far as community events go. So I think that I don't necessarily, I mean, I watch a person, it definitely makes sense for us to report.
My heart wants to. The biological side is more reserved. Kind of a steward on the, if we don't have, we need to have some guidelines set before we just jump into it or we're going to get, we're going to hurt our oppo. If we jump into this now, it will hurt our opportunities in the future to help more officials. My heart wants to.
I'll just hit you up later, don't you worry, Karen.
You know, there's, so, yeah, I'm just, I'm leaning against that.
I'm still internally grappling with it. You know, like you said, my heart personally, I think it's a great thing and it promotes a lot of community. But then it's, I was saying precedent, I'd like to future discuss maybe community grant programs, things like that, competitive process, you know, so it's kind of equal, fair for all and you can kind of assess what's going to have a biggest impact, positive effect on the community. I think that's a fair way to go about it. Thirty-six bucks for buns is one thing, but five hundred bucks is a bit more. And, you know, I don't really want to go to, I know it's a secular community center, but it's located in the church. And I'm a big believer in separation of church and state. And so that's part of what I've been looking for.
Well, it sounds like there's, there's general consensus that before, and we probably should have had this conversation a lot earlier. But it sounds like there's general consensus that people feel like we need some criteria for community grants. I would like to see a community grant program happen because I think that's how we create community. And that's something that Phoenix is a dire need of. But I think Caroline, for right now, I don't know if we can approve this. And I, I don't know if somebody wants to make a formal motion.
Would you be able to approve part of it?
Well, I think that that's the issue, that folks are grappling with this. We have no criteria. We have, are we setting a precedent for other groups that come in? Like the Phoenix.
Counseling.
Counseling Center came in today and also requested money. So now, since we're, if we did give you a partial amount, we'd also be required to give them funding as well. And this isn't something that we're set up to do. And we could be in the future, but right now, we don't have a dedicated source of funding for this to come from. And it's a bummer, I'm sorry you can hear it two times and had that, we didn't have this conversation the first time. But I mean.
I think on the, on the positive side though, is it has motivated us to have this discussion about community grants. And it sounds like, and you guys do have a huge impact on the community. So in the future, during that competitive process with grants, that impact you guys have on the community, it seems like would weigh pretty strong on our, on our assessment.
Sure. And you guys can still have a table and come to the event and slide down the slide for free.
If you're going to put like a dollar change.
Well, we're, we're going to have a mayor dump tank, but, you know, we'll do it.
I pay for that personally. What's the cost on that?
To move us on. So I, since this was agendized, I'm going to say, make a motion to, to not approve the, this particular funding request from the First Presbyterian Church.
It's the First Phoenix Community Center.
Oh, sorry.
That was the whole one from when we didn't have our five oh one C three.
Okay, sorry, First, First Phoenix Community Center. And that I would like to agendize for a later council meeting, a conversation about creating a community grants program for years.
I'm sorry, I have a question. If, as far as, if we were placing money partly for like food for the pantry or something like that, would that be a different?
I think that's what we're saying is no, is to be.
I mean, for a future, for a future.
Okay, so that's exactly what we're saying is that we, so the motion I just made is let's, let's create a grant program so that we can potentially fund projects like that, but right now, we don't have a source of money.
Yes, I understand that. I understand.
Okay.
But for a future, would that be something that would make you way more towards approving it? Or you just?
Well, they want to do it, they just don't have a process to do it.
Exactly, so we're creating, what I'm moving right now is to create a process for us to be able to do it. So motions on the table.
A second? Do we already second?
I haven't approved one, no.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Council Snyder?
I'm open.
Council Cameron?
Yes.
Council Westover?
Yes.
Council Warren?
Yes.
Council Baker?
Yes.
Council Schon?
Yes.
That has passed. Okay, we are now at a point where we have two minutes left.
Sorry. No worries.
I think we need to allocate two minutes at the end of what we're doing with these city managers' reports and comments on people. So if we could do that in ten minutes or less, I guess at least ten minutes to get started on this one. It's not counted, it's in the paper copy anyway. The document itself is eleven pages long, might be twelve if we have this table in the back.
I have a question about that. So it's not documents that's included, those are our current rules of procedure?
That is current rules.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, so it's a quite long document. We have input behind this, it's come from the staff recommending certain changes. We need to get a process that we all agree on here. One possibility is you start with paragraph one and you have consensus, you go to the next one, make changes, consensus, on and on and on, there's twelve pages. Or we start with what the staff has recommended and then we go back and do something else just like that. And we need to agree how we're going to approach this thing.
I have a third option.
Sure.
We could direct staff based on some of the recommendations that they've, they've made to actually develop language around those recommendations. Right now, they're kind of bullet points if folks will see it. Let's see what page is that on?
Sixty-two. Is it sixty-two? I'm sorry.
There's a lot of our pages are going on in there.
Yeah, it's, it's on page fifty-seven or.
So there's, there's kind of two lists. There's one that's a list of recommendations, but they're not actually, so they're recommendations, but they're not actually detailed things that are spelled out that we could put into our code. And then the second thing is a list of questions. And so on the recommendations, we could, you know, ask staff to come back with those flushed out and some actual text around those recommendations that we can look at and approve, as opposed to going one by one.
I think that would expedite the process. What I admit, if staff were to put, actually incorporate the recommendations into the language and the rules and procedures, we review those and adjust those. Yeah, it'll save a step.
Well, understand, I didn't want to put a lot of time and effort into developing the ordinance language because I didn't know which of these you're actually interested in pursuing.
Okay. I like the recommendations that are, that are on there. There's, so again, there's a list of recommendations and a list of questions. Is that a fair characterization?
Right, there's, there's a list of recommendations for things that I, I think you should have.
Uh-huh.
And that's followed by other items that are not addressed in your council rules that you might want to address. And then there were three items that I just said, you know, there were a couple of, there were three other things that I really think you ought to discuss because you may or may not want to, want to do these things. The, the items that I listed under the, the items that are not addressed that you might want to consider are things that I think are very commonly seen in other cities' rules and procedures, but are not in yours. And then the, the three items under questions, you know, those are things you may want, you may not want. They're, they're not necessarily common, but if you want to do it, I'll come up with language for how you do it.
I personally like all the recommendations you made here, I think they make sense. And for me, that was kind of like reading through them, I felt like it was almost like a no-brainer. It wasn't a lot of question that I had about the different recommendations you have. And one thing I would like to see included in this is how council agenda is set. Can kind of clarify that process a little further. I feel like right now, it's difficult to get something on the agenda in a timely manner as we've seen with this whole discussion that, you know, it took four months to have this. Am I, did I just not see that in there, Dave, or?
I thought that I did.
Yes, I'm sure.
Raised, raised the issue of clarifying a counselor's right to add items to the agenda. Right now, you, you have basically one sentence in the, in the code that says that a counselor can add an item to an agenda. And that's about it.
Right.
What, what I was suggesting is that you come up with language that more specifically details the, the right of a counselor to add an item to the agenda and also lay out exactly how that's supposed to happen or how it's, how it could happen.
So I've actually written up a recommendation for, based on the League of Oregon Cities, on Talent and on Medford's council rules and procedures about how we can clarify that agenda setting process. I do have that today, but I don't think we have time for this whole conversation today. So what I, what I would like to see happen today is I would like, based on the recommendations that staff have made, barring the questions that we have to have a lot of discussion about, I would like to see some draft language prepared by staff on those recommendations. And then regarding all the questions about these things aren't in your rules and procedure and things that you are, you should discuss, I think that we should have that discussion on September fifth during our council meeting.
I also think this should be the first item of new business in the agenda.
Thank you.
If we can prioritize it also.
Why don't you make sure you bring the item on the agenda?
Yeah, I agree. We have an ordinance on social gaming on the agenda.
I feel like the information we're trying to assert right here is more of a workshop study. But if it's, but if it is incorporated, we have something to actually go off of. Then we can amend it, might not want to, if we like.
I think if you read through the document and don't look at what he did already, you're probably going to find numerous things that you think could be said better or said differently that need to also be thought about, you know, individual items that you think are not correctly stated, not just what he did. I'm not saying there's anything major in it, but you probably see comfort load of things or better definition of things. So at some point, we're going to have to make sure this, this document is purged in some way. And I agree with what you're saying, you know, all the ones we know that need to be fixed, let's get them done. But let's also make sure we do a good document.
Yeah.
For example, when I did my homeowners association a while back, we did the CCNRs and bylaws. And we took two meetings and slotted through that thing line by line. But by the time we got done, everybody said, okay, we have the document we can live with now. And that was numerous changes, sometimes every paragraph had five or six changes. So at some point, I just want to make sure we all individually have our individual input into this to make sure we're comfortable and that everybody else is too. And that's what's going to take a long time, is going through it like that.
Well, if we do our homework beforehand and read through it and make our little comments, we should be able to, I hope, get through it fairly quickly.
Possible. Another possibility is we take the drafts of our own and maybe hand draft it or do it on the computer so you can change it in regular words or some regular, give it to them and they can make a compact document that has all the different things in there where you can line out what somebody else has put in, we can add something or they've already added if we.
Oh, that sounds really difficult to me.
Yeah.
I, I think that there, there might be pretty different viewpoints on, on this. And so I think that that sounds pretty difficult. I think it might be nice to, did folks read through that list of recommendations? Is there any reason that we, we can't move forward with having staff draft language around those, at least those recommendations? And then we come back for a discussion on?
I like that draft language. I think it'd be really helpful, I think it'd expedite the process and, yeah. I've already said it, we're still.
Should I make the motion?
Let's first of all make sure time-wise.
I don't necessarily need a motion, it's pretty clear what you want. And actually, you know, the, the items under that initial list of things that are already in the code that could be clarified or updated, I have a pretty good idea of language for those items.
Okay.
Now you can go to ten, ten to the fifth, our holidays now.
Maybe one thing for folks to think on is one item I very much want to bring up is what Stu was just talking about, is how agendas are set. So just to give some context, I asked for this to be agendized four months ago. And our current rules say that, you know, council members have a right to add items to the agenda and have them heard in a timely manner, and that hasn't happened. And this is the second time this has happened to me. Both agenda items, I've tried to add, both took four months to get on the agenda and that, that to me is unacceptable. And I would hope that any, any one of us who wants to add an item to the agenda would be heard in a timely manner. And so here, I'll just pass these out so folks can think about them for next time. It's just recommendations for council rules on agenda setting. And these come from the draft rules and procedure for the League of Oregon Cities and also are influenced by the city of Talent and the city of Medford and their rules and procedure. So they're, they're pretty common, they're pretty standard and they're not what our rules say. So maybe it's just something at the conference.
Okay, are we good with this subject now? You've got admission phase.
Go on to the next thing on the agenda, which are city attorney report now here, city manager report.
I have nothing to report to you. Let's see.
Okay, I wasn't asked what you wanted to be on September fifth, but I've already resolved that question.
I need a council conference. You want to start, sir, or are they up to it?
Yeah, just briefly. So CAC is trying to find a meeting time this week. We're hoping to move forward the housing element and then move on to the economic element so that we can pass our conference plan and get this UGDA expansion up. And I have an MQ meeting tomorrow, so I'll report back on that this morning. Check.
We had a Parks and Greenery Commission meeting last week. And just a quick rundown, we had the Dog Day of Summer event this year. I couldn't attend because of my injury, but it sounded like a few people were able to get out there. They had, let's see, seventy-five dogs up and they cooked almost three hundred hot dogs for the community event, which is pretty impressive. And then we also are working on a memorandum understanding with the Community Garden Center. And we are also working on the September twenty-third Bear Creek Stewardship Day, which is the second one we've done this year. And Parks and Rec, Parks and Greenery Committee agreed to start working on that as a committee, kind of bring it into the Greenways, Dr. Greenway Commission's umbrella. And, yeah, so on that September twenty-third, we've got our Bear Creek Stewardship Day. It's at Blue Arena, from nine to noon. It's going to be a fun day, clean up the bike path, maybe we'll remove some blackberries. It's a good, good reason to be down on the creek and spend some time together.
Pass under.
Are you looking?
Yeah.
All right. Parade, Parade's moving, I met with Dr. Don Rubra, principal of PHS last week, meeting with our police chief, Ian Ray, director of public works this week to kind of get that going there. The next, hopefully this week, I'm going to meet with Breezy Chapman, which is the rep at the school for it. And we'll just try to, try to get that going. I should, it's my first time assisting in this, flourishing, I know there's lots and lots of people out in California. So that's in the works. And I'd like to, I don't know if you need to, but put it on an agenda item in the future to discuss. We have our two student city council reps from the high school. And I'd like to discuss how we feel we should incorporate them and best use them. Even logistically, where do we put them in the room? Because one was here tonight and she was in the back row.
Because one was here tonight and she was in the back row. What spot in the agenda do they get input? What do we want the input to look like? How do we want them to get the information from the school of us and get back to them? You've talked within the school that student leadership, their student council, report to them. What's going on? And they can share with us. And then they would have the, you know, the information flow from us to them and then to the school community. But then also getting them activated on things like the stewardship programs and dog days and getting, helping them get the word up to the school. So I'd like to request we put that on the agenda just for discussion in the future and utilize our, our student city council reps.
I'm just going to start with my boss, Brad.
I'm trying to think of such things. Uh, not next week, but the week after.
I'm going to start this week.
Pass it to you. I've already started working. That's it, I guess. Thank you.
I don't have anything. Good to go. Okay, we are seven minutes away from nine thirty. I'll stay to nine thirty if you have any.
Thank you all. Thanks for experiencing, folks. We appreciate you. That was mine. It was yours.
Oh, that was sad.
Yeah, thank you. Sure. Is people not prepared on it? Sure, I can do it. None of us have worked, it's coming up.
You work, you work some stuff out.
Hey, Jen, thank you for facilitating. I think you did a really good job and I just want to say thank you.